Hi, good evening. Hereby open Board of Selectmen meeting, August 13th, 2018, 6:00 PM at the Rutland Public Library. Could we please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the law of the United States of America and to the Republic where which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Can I get a motion to sign Treasury Warrant Number 4 in Payroll?
Same.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, passing those down. There are no meeting minutes tonight to accept, so we are going to go straight to Anita who is here. Come on up, Anita.
Hello. Thank you for putting me first. The gentlemen in the back are wondering how come I get to go first.
It's always ladies first.
Most of it's routine. I think Abby gave you a copy of the -- it's the warrant for the September 4th primary election. We just need five signatures on that and we can get it posted.
So can I get a motion to sign the warrant for the 2018 state primary as presented by the town clerk?
It's removed.
Second.
Questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. And just since we were talking about it, I'd like to point out that Wednesday is the last day to register to vote prior to the primary. There's always a 20-day waiting period, so if anyone hasn't voted, they can go to the town website and information on how to vote, and there's even online voter registration. And absentee ballots are available already in our office. And then item number two is the appointment of election officers. The Mass General Law Chapter 54 stipulates that election officers be appointed between July 15th and August 15th every year, so that's why these weren't included with your other slate. And I -- there's a list of names, and I actually added a little motion at the bottom if anyone wants to.
Thank you. Yeah, so that's page -- that's the second page in your blue open session folder if anybody would like to make that motion.
I move that the slate as presented be appointed election officers for the town of Rutland per MGL Chapter 54, Section 12.
Do I have a second?
My second.
Any questions? And this is available for people to look at if anybody wants to see the full list. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Unanimous. Great. Two down.
And the only other one is that I had gotten some communication from the Attorney General's office, and they have two open meeting law training workshops scheduled for this fall that are in our area. There's one on Monday, September 21st in Orange, which I know is a meeting date for you, so I didn't send that along for the -- your board. And another closer on Thursday, October 18th at the Spencer Memorial Town Hall. And actually Rutland hosted a training, a similar training, last September, and I think the people that went found it beneficial, correct? So I just want to encourage anybody that is interested to go. You need to actually sign up ahead of time, but it's no fee or -- and they basically go over all that the open meeting law entails.
I signed up. It's just by email. It was real easy. Thank you.
Anything else? No, I think last meeting we never had a chance to go over it, but we had the list of updated ethics training, and we still have a few that are outstanding right across the town.
A few, but not very many at all. Damien's been working on the list, so I'll let you know.
All right. Does anybody have any questions for Anita? No? Thank you for coming in.
Thanks, Anita.
All right. Bylaw Subcommittee Updates, 6:10. We're actually a little early. Is there anyone here from a bylaw subcommittee that would like to start? Thank you.
First, I'd just like to make a very brief, personal statement and just say that I've -- anyone who has seen me hobbling around town with red bruises all over my body, it's just a reaction to a medication, and I need to have a hip replacement, but I'm very healthy other than that, and I plan to be here for a long time. So I have a somewhere -- a short statement that I'd like to read to start. And first of all, I'd like to thank you for the opportunity to speak to the Board of Selectmen, and it's a chance for us to give the new select board members a brief glimpse into the process of writing a bylaw and getting it passed at the town meeting. It's a lengthy process that often includes multiple reviews by KP Law, who I'm sure that you're familiar with, but that's a town council, and ultimately by the Attorney General. Each bylaw must be written within the parameters of federal and state laws and regulations. The bylaw committee includes members from the planning board and the community. Presently, Peter Crane is a non-voting consultant to the bylaw -- to the bylaw committee, and we also have an opening as Julie Kelly has resigned. We begin the process of drafting bylaws by reviewing materials from the Cannabis Control Committee, which is also known as the CCC. And as we reviewed information that they had provided, as well as articles from KP Law, Julie had remained -- arranged an informal meeting of a member -- and a member from the CCC from Boston came out to answer our questions. Her name was Jen Flanagan. She's a representative from Lemon Street, I believe it is. And she was very valuable, provided updated current information, and was able to expand our knowledge of the parameters of the new bylaw. The meeting was posted, and officials from other towns were invited to attend by Margaret Nordwitz, and Wes Boylston, and Princeton sent officials, as well as one Rutland from -- one resident from Rutland was in attendance. And we all agree that that was a very useful format to have the three different towns because we all have different demographics and, you know, we're able to share knowledge. We have also been working with Ron Baron, Darrell Barons, excuse me, from the CMRPC. He has some funds that are available for him to use in community outreach. He's brought resources, attended our meetings to share his knowledge, and has -- is very well-versed on what other towns have written bylaws have been accepted. And he has proved to be a very valuable asset at no cost to the town. Is our practice to include any departments or residents that are impacted by any bylaw that we are writing? I will be meeting with the fire chief and the police chief to invite them to attend one of our meetings and to ask if they have any specific concerns that -- so that we would be prepared to answer, you know, any use, any of our resources when they attend a meeting. And I would also like to thank Gary for being a great assistance any time that we have asked him for information or to come to meetings, although I do suspect, Gary, that you're retiring because the storm water regulations are coming up again, so.
Yeah, that and because I haven't got to so many of your meetings.
True. But we appreciate it, Gary.
You're very welcome.
We will have a completed draft of the marijuana bylaw after incorporating any requests from the chiefs, and we'll draft articles for the former town meeting. The bylaw will be submitted to KP Law, and their responses will be addressed. It then goes to the planning board, who is the authority over bylaws for their approval, and is then submitted to the town administrator. At this point, I breathe a big sigh of relief and kind of put the whole thing out of my mind, but then I'm reminded that the bylaws need to be tweaked, and I am not sure how that process happens because it's out of our hands at that point. The planning board will present the final bylaws to the select board and the financial committee, and any major changes will require another trip back to KP Law and starting that process over. We will also schedule an informational meeting to the town residents, and we would like to do that meeting close to the time of the town meeting, so whenever that's -- that date is established, we would like to know that as soon as possible. The regulations from the CCC are very comprehensive regarding security, location to schools, size of grow facilities, and they are actually -- this is my copy. It's 182 pages, as you can see, a very fine print. So they leave very little to our discretion in those 182 pages, but we can address such issues as have some input on security. We can have a lot of input on locations of types of businesses. The -- there are actually eight different licenses that the -- that are available for the public to respond to. At present, we are also working on a construction noise bylaw with three residents from the Nancy Drive area at their request. We've been meeting -- met with them twice to hear their concerns and then to look at a draft that they had written. They have agreed to postpone this and put it on hold for a brief time until we get through the marijuana bylaw and expect to have it on the annual town meeting, not the fall. The subcommittee has also been working with Anita Carlson, the town clerk, and Peter Crane to codify bylaws, the town bylaws, and all new bylaws that we write will be in the new format. My view is that a perfect bylaw comes from knowledges, knowledge of the laws and regulations, the needs of the community. It does not reflect any bias of the committee members that write it, and it has support of all members of the committee. We usually have so have been able to talk through differences and come up with a consensus. I like to think that we are close to that objective, and in the 10 years or so that I have been involved with the committee, both as a community resident and also as a member of the planning board, we have not had any bylaws that have been disproved by the Attorney General or really any major changes. He's changed words here or there, or she has, I should say. Just a couple of things that I jotted down from to show the comprehensiveness of the CCC's regulations. Every seed that is planted is tracked from the time it's planted to where it's harvested to whenever it's shipped to multiple spots along the way until it's sold, so. And I think practically every leaf is accounted along that way, too, although that might be a slight exaggeration. They -- the CCC is very strict on what kinds of signs you can have posted out there. They've even considered the shape of the gummy bears candies that people are concerned with kids consuming can only be, I don't know, I think it's, I remember it's square and cannot represent any kind of an animal. The -- they're very strict about labeling, and they are incorporating the RMD, the Medical Marijuana, which is currently under public health, this will be incorporated into the commission, I believe. It's in November, I believe. I mentioned, I think, that they have eight licenses, and the goal of the commission was to be very inclusive and to set it up so you can have the little guy can be going to business as well as the giant million, multimillion-dollar corporations like the one in Charlton. That sums up what I had in mind, and if you have any questions, I'd be glad to mention and Sean and my other -- some of my other committee members are here, so.
Do we have questions?
No.
No? Questions? No.
We're waiting on a draft.
Pardon me?
Will there be a draft coming to us to see, or?
If that's something that you would like, we have not done that in the past, but that's certainly something that we could consider.
We don't know what your position is, which way you're leaning towards or?
Well, in the bylaw, we're not leaning anyway, any direction, because we're, you know, it's a neutral by -- you know, we're a neutral, you know, stating what the availability of, you know, the different choices of bylaw is made, so we're not, you know, we'd like to make it very clear that we do not make recommendations. We set -- we do, I'm sorry, Sheila, we do write the articles, and the articles are the ones which, you know, people would vote on different choices that would determine the position of the town in the future, but that's separate, the articles are separate from the bylaw. I mean, it's a package, but there are two sides to it, two pieces in it. Is that making sense?
Although, is it fair to say that no bylaw has been suggested and brought through the very comprehensive process that you talk about unless there had been support for it somewhere?
Not necessarily. The bylaws are -- come up because of the new state regulations usually, or regulations have changed, or the one that comes to my mind is the dog bylaw, which is not the official name, but it's the name we go by. That was revised because the laws changed, so if Massachusetts laws are revised, then we have to redo our bylaws. Sometimes people will come to us and say, we think we need a bylaw on such and such as the gentleman who would like the noise, construction noise bylaw. You know, so bylaws can come, bylaws can be suggested to the committee, and it would be up to us to either write it or explain to them why it didn't need to be written. But we don't, we don't really decide we're going to do it out of the blue, saying, oh, we're going to write a bylaw on whether or not you have red chairs in the selectmen's committee room here. Although we could write that if you'd like another color.
I guess maybe we should talk, since some of you are here, and because it's the most time-sensitive in regards to the marijuana bylaw, because I think one of the things I read that it really just made a lot of sense was that most communities who have moratoriums in place, the way we do, where we know ours is, has a hard end to it, as of 1231, we need to take some action. When they came to their town meetings, they actually had two things to vote on. One was a zoning-related bylaw, speaking to some of the things you talked about. And I know Worcester, obviously, because they've gone right straightforward, they have a lot of things that are already in place when it comes to ordinances, when it comes to their local sales tax, the community host agreements. Those are things that I know we do have control over. However, those will only come into play if the town wants to be a community that allows the sale of marijuana. And the logic that I read in this article that really, again, really resonated with me was that we would need to be prepared for either, that our worst-case scenario was to not prepare our zoning ordinances appropriately when they went before the, you know, the town meeting as in the form of a bylaw, and to simply vote on the yes, no, are we, you know, making this moratorium permanent or not? Town votes, we're not making it permanent, and then we are left with only the state structure in place, and we really haven't placed any local structure that we know we can do on it.
No, I think I understand your question, and one of the ramifications from that would be that in any kind of an industry, for example, that the Charlton Monster, what do you want to call it, the Charlton Monster dispensary, research lab, grow facility, could be placed anywhere in town.
Right.
Right now, it can only go into a certain zoning.
Right.
But we are actually writing, you know, part of the bylaw that we would, we are in writing is, you know, has considered that, and it'll have a chart which says, you know, this business can go here in the light industry, and so that's definitely part of the process of writing a bylaw.
Okay.
And for, if you have, if you go back and look at the regulation that we had for medical marijuana, that was included in that, that's, we're basically following that format.
Okay, so the?
So we will also, excuse me, we will also, we'll be having three articles, and there are going to be choices for the town to make, and I think that's important. For example, number one could be no marijuana in town. There's, as I said, there are eight different licenses available, which could be, one of them could be a grow facility, which would be bringing revenue into the town but would not really expose our children or, you know, be on the level of the store. But so that's why I think it's important that we have the meeting, the informational meeting as close to the, to the vote as possible, because there's a lot of material to consider.
Okay, so the bylaw subcommittee right now is thinking about three separate articles, one of which is a straight yes, no?
Yeah, we've considered a lot. Let me turn to my cohorts over here.
Yeah. Do you want me to stand?
There's a mic here, so you don't need to move, but you do need to give me your name and address.
Sure. My name's Sean Moore. I'm on the bylaw committee. As opposed to the Cannabis Control Commission, I have recused myself, so I'm not a voting member, but what's going on is I believe that what we're, they are thinking of doing since the state wants towns to decide whether or not they want marijuana to come into their town, I would imagine on the ballot would have to be a yes to allow it to come in, no not to allow it to come in, and then if a yes does go through, they are proposing to do either one of, accept all eight types of licenses, or put each license on the ballot to have, to say what the town would like to have come in.
So I think you're referring, excuse me, for the chair, I think you're referring to the warrant, right? Going through town meeting and actually making that selection? So my understanding is a number of towns have done it that way, but basically kind of a menu?
Menu option.
Selection, what type of establishment do you want?
And that's done through the articles.
Yeah, yeah, so that's my understanding. And to your point about the, to the chair's point about the general bylaw and zoning bylaw, Lauren Goldberg, our legal counsel, had actually advised early on to have the two bylaws presented to mirror each other or complement each other. I don't know how that'll work now. I know that was early on, so that's something, you know, the town's going to have to work through with counsel, but to present both the general and the zoning. So that's something that we'll have to really look at. Zoning, obviously, is going to take care of the districts and where the business can be located. General, I really, I can't even envision what that's going to look like at this point, but again, Lauren had advised putting both forward.
How does that work in a third?
I'm sorry, I don't, that I don't understand.
You said three articles?
Well, we've just been --
There's still coming up with, right now.
We're still kind of tossing that around.
They just finished the, where things would go, like what part of the town, like industry, industry, TC1, TC2. And right now, that's as far as, I would say, again.
So assuming that our fall town meeting might end up on the later side of things, November as opposed to October, in particular with the transition happening, what do you foresee in terms of dates for info sessions for this? Because we're basically butting up against September already.
Right, correct. I have not really considered, you know, a date. I've been relying on you to tell me when it will be, but as I say, we'd like, I think it's important to schedule it closer to the election because it is complex and, you know, I think it's important for people to hear about it and have some time to think about it, but not have time to forget about it.
Okay.
And if I may, Ron through the Central Mass Regional Planning did say they have money set aside to help towns, so it's like free money if they wanted to hire a consultant to come out and explain both ends, pros and cons of any question that a citizen may have.
Okay.
We just, we need to implement that as a town, to say, hey, you know, make an appointment for someone to come out.
Who's with?
Ron from the Central Mass Regional.
He's the person who's been working with the board as a part-time planner for the planning board, but he also has come to us with information and advice and a lot of good information, has been a real asset, and he's been doing that through his, the money, the grants that he has at no extra cost for us, for the town.
So do you feel like it's appropriate now to ask Ron to give us some available dates in October? There's obviously a lot of communities, right, with December deadlines on their moratoriums? We all have fall town meetings coming up. Is that probably what's going to define when the information session is?
Yes, and I was planning to do that. He'll be, actually be at the planning board tomorrow night, and I was going to ask him about that tomorrow, so.
And do you need anything from us in terms of DLTA? Do you need a letter? Do you need anything scheduling-wise?
Not that I know of, but I'll certainly come knocking on your door.
The date.
The date.
The date, the date, that's what we really need.
I feel like we could work around his speaker, right?
That would be, that would be very much appreciated.
I would guess we don't want it on our meeting nights. You probably don't want it on planning board meeting nights, or maybe you do. Maybe it's part of a planning board where you move location and somebody's shaking his head and you?
Planning board has a lot on their plate.
Planning board has a lot on their plate, okay. So as far as the fall goes, obviously marijuana is taking up a lot of time. Was there anything else? It sounds like construction or general noise will wait until May. Managed growth bylaw is on track for May. That's a little bit more on our end because we're waiting, again, for CMRPC to come out with all their numbers this fall.
And there are those infamous storm water rules and regulations, although I understand that they're bringing the whole program out. People may or may not know that it was tabled last year because there was so much confusion about it, and it's been not so much rewritten, but their approach to the towns on it has been clarified and a lot to make the writing of the bylaw a lot more understandable and easy, so.
Okay, okay.
And I think I want to make sure that people know there is a distinction between the planning board and the planning board bylaw subcommittee. The members are, you know, similar, but we meet on different nights mainly because there's too much work going on to combine it into a planning board meeting, so.
Yeah, and I think you probably hit the nail on the head. I know we've had discussions, there were certainly discussions in our Goals and Objectives meeting about sort of following along with how other communities structure it, where the planning board's bylaw subcommittee would be dealing with planning-specific issues, and then a town-wide bylaw review committee seated would have membership from planning and from specifically the others.
Certainly not tonight, but I would definitely like to know more about that concept.
Yeah. Yeah, I mean, I think it's certainly something we should all talk about together and we can move forward with that. So, okay, so we have placeholders in for you for the fall. I think what we'll do now then is wait to hear on an, I think, again, I'm assuming October date for the information session, and we will absolutely work around you, and I guess I'm headed towards thinking we'll have one, we're going to be getting from you one general and one zoning-related, yes?
I don't know. I don't think we have really talked about going in that direction.
Okay.
I would need to get a little more information. Generally, we have not so much split zoning and non-zoning bylaws or, you know, when we've dealt with matters, we haven't really had to.
So through the chair, I just suggest looking at the KP. So through the chair, I just suggest looking at the KP advisories that were issued early on, where it was advised that the towns adopt the zoning and general. Again, that may have evolved at this point. It may be changing, so.
Excuse me, Margaret. I think that that very well may have because we looked at about eight, I counted the stack of them today. We had about eight, eight bylaws from other towns that have been passed and accepted by the Attorney General and none of them took that approach.
Okay. Were they, were they all zoning or were they a mix of zoning and general? Do you know, happen to-
I would say that they were a mix of zoning and general, but I need, would need to think about that a little bit more as to the distinction between the two. I know that legally there are two categories, but I, we've never considered that in writing bylaws in my last eight years on the, on the committee.
So do you foresee September being the time when whatever gets written goes to legal for review? Is that sort of, I'm trying to piece together the timeline in my head.
Yeah, probably late September.
Late September?
Yeah.
Okay.
And they usually, I mean, they're, it's a relatively quick process. You know, we are writing pretty good bylaws and we don't get too much kickback from them, but.
Okay, all right.
So.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Does anybody else?
You're welcome.
We're in okay shape, okay. Mike, Mike, I'm sorry. You knew you'd be a little late. Come on up. No, we have more.
No, we just have copies.
Ah, thank you. Thank you.
Thank you.
How to write a bylaw.
Ready?
Ready, go.
Evening. Mike Sullivan, Crawford Road, Chairman of the RDIC. I'll make this pretty brief. I'm here just really to give the select board an update of two kind of milestone activities we have going on with the RDIC. First, we put out to bid in conjunction with the solar committee, a request for proposals on solar on the HPDD district, which is the Rattlin Heights. HPDD is Heights Plan Development District. That's what it's officially called, just so everybody knows. We got back two of those. We evaluated, interviewed those and we have selected one and we are now in the process through our solar consultant of negotiating with them further to see where it goes. So I just wanted you to be aware that that's going on and we'll see where it goes. Any questions?
Acreage?
I'm sorry?
Acreage?
Uh, twenty-three-ish.
Twenty-three.
Twenty-three-ish on the southwest side of the hill. So just by way of explanation, if you go up to the top of the hill and, and look, if you stand and look at the flagpole, it's down to the flagpole and to the right, so that side hill.
Flagpole to the right.
So if you're standing in the middle of the field at the top of the hill, look at the flagpole. It's kind of from the, the dump site, if you will, the incinerator site to the right.
Okay.
Is that, is that clear?
No, I, I-
Well, I'll tell you what.
At some point, I'll need a map.
Are you talking to Brownfield?
Well, that's an interesting-
Funny. You have a map. Thank you.
So this is where the flagpole roughly is here.
And I'm at the top of the hill.
We're at the top of the hill. This is where the incinerator was, so we're going around.
Behind the, behind the upper road.
Behind the upper road.
This is, this is the upper road. The school is here.
Oh, 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 oh. This blue, right here?
Correct.
Okay.
So theoretically, from the street and so on, you're not going to be able to see it.
So how much is tree covered and do we?
It's, it's much of the area where we already selectively captured.
Do we clear it or do they?
Uh, we are, at this point, assuming we clear it.
That's one of the, one of the things to talk about, is that?
Correct, that's-
Okay.
That'll be one of our negotiating points, but that, we have proposed that we clear it.
And who is flagging for wetland? Us or them?
Well, it'll be done in conjunction with CONCON. We're not that far yet, but-
You're not that, you're not there yet?
No.
Okay.
But they are going to be responsible for consulting site studies and things of that nature before they ever construct anything there. That's going to be their responsibility in the agreement.
Okay.
And we're getting some upfront money to pay for those kinds of consulting services we may need of fifteen thousand.
Fifteen thousand. That was a part of the RFP, that they would pay consulting and legal costs associated with this.
So I'll, I'll, sorry. Oh, I thought you had a question.
Uh, I guess I do. So am I, am I seeing that diagram correctly, that a lot of it is kind of skirting the northwest portion of Central Tree Middle School?
It, it, it will not be on the north side, close to the school. I mean, in that one corner, it'll get, you know, up against our, the Heights boundary, but there'll still be that big tree lot between the Heights boundary and the school.
Okay. So I guess my only question is, there's, there's no conflict between what the, the school's projection moving forward, soccer fields, football fields, et cetera, because it's such a proximity to the school, is, is, did we rule out any conflict with Central Tree's wishes?
I don't know what Central Tree's wishes are that you're talking about, but the grade where we're talking, you can't build-
It's not, no, playable, okay.
It's, it's a very steep hill.
And through the chair, so there is actually that wooded buffer. That's all town property. The property that Mike's discussing is under the, under the development control of the RDIC. That, that other buffer, that whole treed area is town property and that's an area where Central Tree might potentially look.
Okay, great.
So what she's talking about is this tree here.
Oh, yeah.
But this is all very simple, so there's no way you could-
Sounds like a good plan.
Yeah, there's no way you could do fields or build there.
Great.
So we'll, we'll keep you apprised as it goes on. I will tell you that I've been most impressed with the town's solar consultant. She's excellent, right on top of things. She is really good. So that's number one. Number two is we, I just today received the final draft from KP Law on an RFP, a general RFP for the site, that our goal and objective of that RFP was to be able to not specifically identify individual parcels. So I'm going to kind of generalize and make a statement that the, that the RFP says, here's this eighty-eight acre parcel, it's for sale or lease, come tell us what you want to do to any portion of it. So that we've kind of opened the door to allow people to, you know, not be, not be hindered by us saying, okay, there's a ten acre parcel here, there's a six acre parcel here. Because we have had interest from everyone, from senior housing, retail, marijuana growing, a museum, and I'm missing something else. I should have put, brought my notes. But we've had a lot of general interest in the property itself, so we'll, we'll see where that goes as well. A Christopher House is still out there.
Okay.
All right, so that's really all unless you have questions. Just trying to keep you folks up to speed.
And you have a meeting Friday?
We have a meeting Friday.
Morning.
Friday morning, seven o'clock.
Okay.
Not, not six o'clock, seven.
All right then.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Thanks.
Is there anyone here for public comment? Yes, name and address, please.
Hi, my name is Ed Tarquino. I live at eighty-nine Paddock Road. And I'm here about a traffic problem we're having in our area on the street. And I recently petitioned or made out a form at the DPW to ask them to put a thirty mile an hour speed limit sign, two really, one at each end of the road. And I'm here mainly to see what I can do to push that along and what happens if it doesn't happen and so forth.
I'm just pulling up your address so I can see where you are.
Can I, yes, can I ask a question? Have you received the sign request form yet?
I made one out, yes.
You did make one out, okay, good.
But I don't know what happens after that because I'm kind of new to this stuff, so, you know.
That makes its way through the police department, fire department, DPW before it gets to the board. So how long ago did you fill that out? Was that just recently or?
Yeah, a week ago.
Oh, okay.
Yeah. Oh, it comes back here first?
It, it goes through, it goes from DPW to, DPW to police and fire and then it comes back to, to be put on a board's agenda.
Okay.
So I'm going to ask you the same question I've asked another group that had come in regarding traffic, and I thought I knew where you were and I did. You have a road that is not, I think generally, traveled as a commuter road. Is that-
That's true.
-fair to say?
Oh, yes, absolutely.
So your issues are internal to the people who are living in your neighborhood?
I don't think it's those people. I think it's people, it's people mainly on the weekends. In fact, just this past Friday morning at about eight o'clock, there was a guy going up and down the street on a motorcycle. Looked to me like he was going pretty fast.
Okay.
And he must have gone up there, I saw him go up three times and come back three times and then that was it. He had another guy in the back of his motorcycle, so I think that was the guest. And just tonight, I saw another guy, another car that didn't look like it belonged there and he was kind of whipping up the road. And, you know, I, I don't think a forty mile an hour speed limit sign is appropriate because, you know, people see forty, they go forty-five and that's way too fast for that little road.
Yeah, yeah, I mean, I think you, I guess you sort of answered my question. Obviously, when people bring up issues of speeding on Route sixty-eight or one-twenty-two, we say, yeah, of course, there's people from all over. Who's using paddock other than?
Guests, I think. Probably kids, you know.
And we don't have the police chief here tonight, but do you-
He is here tonight?
We don't, but do you feel like this is a very specific issue or a more generalized issue?
Oh, generalized, yeah.
Okay.
Well, what happens? Should I come the night it's, it's coming back to you folks or what?
No, it was just, it was more of just to get a sense of what was going on. We have roads that people use as cut-through. That certainly has become an issue. I mean, there's just generally more traffic in town and so to find out what your specific issue was is helpful to us.
Okay.
Somebody, I think, wants to corroborate your story.
Oh.
Name and address, please. Thank you.
Thank you.
Steven Sherman, Paddock Road. I think what's happened is, what's happening all over town, we're getting more and more people moving into the neighborhood, more houses. There's more traffic. Time was, we might have seen three cars in a day. Now we see thirty and everybody's in a hurry to get home, everybody's in a hurry to get work, to work. The incident that Ed brings up is, there was a fellow on a bike and along with going a little too fast, he didn't have any mufflers on that bike and you could hear him halfway to Harbiston. He was just out there riding around, having fun and sounding off. The other thing that I was going to mention is along the ideas of signs. I've stood at the intersection on my bike or on a walk with my wife and watched school buses, of all things, come down Bushy Lane doing at least forty miles an hour, never stopping the cross paddock and going on down Bushy Lane towards sixty-eight. That's, that's a school bus. And the reason I'm saying that is, is along with this speed limit sign, maybe we could get some stop signs because nobody stops there. They just come flying right across paddock. When I, when I'm coming down paddock to come home, if I see somebody coming down Bushy Lane, I assume they're not going to stop, so I stop. That's how bad it is. Nobody stops coming out of there.
Are there stop signs there now?
No.
No.
Okay. All right, we, we appreciate you coming in, so we're going to keep an eye out for the form as it crosses our desks.
It's just a lot of people have moved in and people are great, but they bring problems too.
Sounds like the process has begun, so.
Thank you. Thank you for coming in.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Uh, can I, all right, I think I, it looks like I can move on to Gary. Come on up.
Okay, I will, I do have that request on my desk for the speed limit signs. Generally speaking, thickly settled signs also serve the same purposes as a speed limit sign, but that does have to go through police for the traffic study first. Stop signs, as everybody knows in this town, I've certainly preached enough that there are so many stop signs missing in this town that are not even included in some of the older subdivisions. It does take a good chunk of change to buy them all, but as we see them or are notified of them, we put them in. So just as everyone knows. Well, at any rate, the first thing I have on here is a discussion about Sharnick Hill Road. I'm sure you all saw, well, certainly saw and signed the letter that the board sent out and I'm certain that you all saw the response that we got. The issue here is, here we are in pretty much September and I have daily phone calls coming in about the disrepair of Sharnick Road. What I've asked for by letter on through the board is a complete reclamation and repave of Sharnick Hill Road for the roughly thirty-two hundred feet from Maine to Woodside. Now, as everyone knows, what every road opening permit states in this town, the road is to be brought back to as close to original as possible, which in this case wasn't a reclamation, but that's what I wanted because the roughly a hundred and four thousand dollars it's going to cost to replace that road, we do not have. We just don't have that available in chapter ninety funds. So the letter pretty much states that's not going to happen. However, I was called to a site visit with the contractor and the paver and was given a counteroffer. So what that would entail is both sides of the road being straight edge saw cut from start to finish. The, the piece stone would be removed and replaced with processed gravel to be compacted properly, as per the engineer. Any place on the roadway that has transverse or alligator cracking would have to be squared, removed and treated the same. And spots, there's, the narrowest spot is ten feet wide and we're getting into a school season with school buses. We have trucks that use that road because the bridge was done over, over the Ware River. Chip trucks that avoid the center of town. And to further make that a problem is now we have the possibility of, hopefully next year, Palma Gussit being closed for a short time for the replacement of the Multimil Dam. That is going to send an awful lot of traffic, especially truck traffic down a Sharnick Hill. So that's where I am. It's very important that we get this done because I assure you, if we go through the winter season while Sharnick Hill Road is in the condition it's in, it will become narrower. I assure you that's going to happen. My plows are going to peel up that blacktop unless it's properly replaced, gravel's compacted, replaced and sealed. All the seams have to be sealed. So that's where we stand with Sharnick Hill. Summer's over as far as I'm concerned and something has to be done here. So I bring that to the board.
Comments?
Got it. I mean, so you're going to do a saw cut on either side, all the way down. It's going to, the finished, the finished product's going to look like a patch job still, right?
Well, you'll have the old existing pavement versus new.
Whatever they do on the sides, then you have whatever was existing, which is not what we asked for in the letter.
Yep, you're right. You're absolutely right. I, I fear, Jeff, that this is going to become a legal battle and it'll be just carried on and on and on and not get done. And to me, it's very important that this is done in some regard for the winter season.
Here's my thoughts. I mean, we, you came to the board, you said this is the proposal. This is how you wanted the road done a certain way. The letter was drafted, it was bounced off of legal, said this is the specifications, which expires in nine days from now, right? Saying we want the road fixed to these specifications by that date, I think it was the twenty-fourth of August, and if not, X, Y and Z, right?
Right, that's right.
I don't recall looking through the letter unless you feel like contesting it and doing a bantering back and forth or a counteroffer. We didn't ask for a counteroffer, right?
No, I'm just, I'm just giving, they were to respond to me by Friday, August thirteenth.
And, and we didn't ask for a renegotiation at any point. We sent out the letter saying this is what we want, this is the deadline and X, Y, Z, the consequences. So my belief is better hurry up. You've got nine days to redo Sharnick Hill Road because school's going to start and the deadline is the twenty-fourth.
But it's also, it's also a, a part of my meeting process and dealings with them to report to you, the board, what their counteroffer- to report to you, the Board, what their counteroffer was. Everyone knows how I feel about the road. It's not, it's not the road it was. And it's gonna be heavily traveled, both with a subdivision going and the existing traffic, and school buses, trailer trucks, so on and so forth.
So, Gary, I mean, I have to say, I think Jeff hit the nail on the head. When you said something about a counteroffer, that really raises red flags. We're not in a situation of wheeling and dealing here. A letter, a formal letter was sent by the Board of Selectment, Selectment regarding a road that we own. The formal response we have is dated July eighth, so we can go by that. The contractor is essentially questioning the phrase, and the phrase is correct, that the road is supposed to be repaired, which, what is the phrase? Because there are two different things that are, that are quoted here.
I don't think it does justice to anybody who lives there.
Well, I, he wrote it in quotes, so I will restate it for the record, which is "as close as possible to the original conditions." It does not say "slightly worse." It does not say "significantly better." If in your estimation, as the Department of Public Works Superintendent, that a full reclamation is needed to get it as close to original condition, then that's what needs to happen, because of the amount of damage that was done to it.
Or else I wouldn't have brought it to you. To me, it was one smooth blacktop layer from shoulder to shoulder.
So, they offer you a counter that doesn't sound at all like bringing it back to "as close as possible to original condition." And again, "not a little bit worse, not a little bit better, as close as possible." That's it. That's the only phrase, and they read into that, I think, a little bit too much. Would, is that a fair statement?
Yes.
So you're bringing this to us tonight, asking if, what, we're willing to back off?
No, no, no. I'm reporting to you about the offer that they gave me. It's still, the letter was sent by the Board of Selectment. I have to bring you, I've gotta bring you, I've gotta be, you've gotta be aware of the meetings that we've had down there. Everybody's aware of what I want on that road. I want it done. At a cost of a hundred and four thousand dollars.
May I suggest, then, that that response needs to be in writing, CC to the Contractor and the Board? Right? Because we have notice in writing to the Contractor, we have a response in writing from the Contractor, and then we have what apparently sounds like two weeks' worth of meetings, and he said this, and we offered this. Right? So I, we couldn't, we can go that way. It sounds to me, and I don't know, I don't think we need to take a vote on this, we already did, but the Board made a request.
Okay.
So, the Board's letter clearly specified repairs, and as Sheila said, the request, or the directive, was to return the road to as close to original condition as possible. So, you know what the original condition of the road was prior to it being ripped up. So, in your opinion, would the, would the straight cutting, and all the gravel laying, and the repaving essentially restore the road to as original, to original, as close to original condition as possible?
No.
Okay, then that's that.
But it's still, I have to, and I meant to, I wanted to report this to you, you folks, a couple of weeks ago. That just didn't happen. Things got wrapped up, didn't happen.
So, our office, Gary, can provide another copy of the Board's letter to you, to provide to the Contractor? And the Board's letter, you know, as Sheila and Jeff have said, the Board's letter was clear.
Yep.
This is what the Board has requested.
All right.
Okay.
We will carry it forward.
What, I mean, in the letter, it even says, the road allows for twelve foot of passage of what was a twenty-foot roadway, like, and what you're saying now is it might even be down to ten foot.
There are a couple really narrow spots where hydrants and water lines are put in that are down to ten feet.
So that's not the twenty foot that it was before?
Oh, no doubt about it. No doubt about it.
And specified deadlines still apply.
Yeah.
Okay.
So, I think, Gary, it'd probably be best for you to document all the differences between the condition now and the condition prior, in order to support the Board's request. So just document everything, okay?
Okay.
Thanks.
Consider it done. Thank you.
Before we get off that topic, can I just ask, because I know we have Planning Board members here, another part of the letter, and was this sent to the Planning Board, Abby, for review? Indicates that the Select Board is woefully lacking in information. And I just want to ensure that, in fact, are we all on the same page when it comes to Sharnick Hill, the work being done in that area, and permitting, utilities, the site, the plans? Do you feel like you have everything you need, that we're the ones that are missing something?
No, we're not.
No, we're not?
As far as plans are concerned, the particular latest version of plans, I can't say we even have one in our office. I know our consulting engineers do have the latest plans. And there really isn't that much difference regarding that. Regarding Sharnick Hill Road itself, this was, as far as I am concerned, an agreement between the Water and Sewer Commissioners and the developer. It is not within the subdivision, so we have no control over it.
Okay.
I do actually have a question. In this letter that was sent out, you gave the developer a deadline, and then you said, "or X, Y, or Z." What were those X, Ys, or Zs?
We'll have to dig it up.
So it says, if you'd like me to read it, yeah. "Should you not comply with this letter, the town may exercise its rights under general law, Chapter forty, Section fifty-seven, and the bylaws, so that no permits of any kind will be issued for work within Bryce Lemon Estates. Permits may also be withheld or revoked if the road repairs are not timely commenced and/or completed."
Okay, thank you.
So, Abby, could we get copies over to the Planning Board of our letter and the response we got from the developer? Thank you. Okay.
Just, I have one quick question.
Name and address.
Since, since the, Mike Sullivan, Crawford Road. Since the letter was originally generated by the Select Board, wouldn't it be appropriate that you respond to his? Gary has now come to you with information.
Yeah.
Wouldn't it be appropriate for the Select Board to send a letter back, not Gary?
We are.
We're gonna send him the same letter, right?
And, and acknowledge that you don't accept the counterproposal?
We weren't asking for one.
We can write an addendum to the letter saying we understand that there have been separate conversations.
Whatever. All I'm suggesting is, from a continuity standpoint, it should come from you.
Sure, okay.
Really none of my business.
It's not really Gary's job to be the messenger, so, I appreciate that. Thank you.
Next.
Okay, moving on, I have some Chapter ninety updates. The work that was approved and sent in for Chapter ninety for partial rehabilitation of East Hill Road. The top coat of pavement, the structures, the base was put on, the top, top base coat was put on. The structures for drainage have been put in and raised, and the final pave will go on that eleven hundred feet either tomorrow afternoon or Thursday. So the worst part of that road will be complete. So that's just an update. But I also wanted to throw in that, and I don't know, again, Sheila, I'll mention this to you as the Chair, Skip, the Chair before her. According to Mastot, the award letter for the additional three hundred and seventy-seven thousand has still not gone out, at least I haven't received it in my office for this current fiscal. I don't know if you got it. In the past, it either went to your house, Skip, it went to your house. I always was copied, but I have not seen it in conversations with Mastot. Six weeks ago, it still had not gone out. I did try to get another answer today, I just haven't gotten it yet. But, at any rate, I've asked for the ledger, I expect the ledger of committed and uncommitted funds on the Mastot sheet to be delivered to me, or sent to me tomorrow, and I'll have more information on the exact dollars. The point, the point I wanted to bring up and make was, I have many calls coming in regarding Bushy Lane. Now, Bushy Lane needs some rehab, and it's approximately point seven tenths of a mile. Now, and what I'd like to do is put a coat of binder only on Bushy Lane. So for the whole, the whole length of the job, it would be eighty-five thousand dollars out of Chapter ninety. So what I would like to do, before I filled all the paperwork out and brought it in, just for your review, because it only takes really my signature, but I don't send anything out unless I have the Board supporting me. So, if I do have the money there, I would like to move on a pave of Bushy Hill. And I will send that to you.
And that's the dirt side, the?
That's the dirt side. We call it, there's three sections of Bushy, so we call it two and three. Many, many call, and more than a weekly basis now, and now I'm getting three or four calls a week.
And I know the school buses have a real tough time.
They do, they do, and they also have a turnaround down there on private property. It's just gotta be, it's, it's in terrible shape, especially like the last half of number three. So, we did put millings on it, so I think it should be graded, compacted, and just a binder coat, not, not base and top.
And how long do you think that that would last? I mean, would that be foreseeable future?
Well, it lasts more than four months, or a hundred and fourteen days, if anybody wants to know.
Tick tock, tick tock.
No, I think it's a Band-Aid. It's not, it's not a permanent fix, because it's a baby binder, or just, I'm sorry, a base coat. But because there's really not an awful lot of traffic down there, and there's certainly not heavy traffic, I would, I would put on that at least fifteen years. Generally, small-town roads go twenty, with a pavement, and a highway goes ten, so.
So you want, want us to say to you, "Go ahead and do it," instead of waiting for another two weeks?
That would be my proposal, I haven't filled out the paperwork.
Come back to us and say, "Whatever."
The big thing here, Skip, is I gotta make sure the funds are available.
Yeah, but you're also looking at time.
Looking at time. Looking at time, but because it doesn't-
So, two weeks from now, you're gonna come back and ask us the same thing, and you got lost two weeks?
Yeah, well, if you're gonna-
You're gonna say, "Gary, go ahead and do it," or "don't do it"? Is that what you're trying to tell us? Ask, is that what you're asking for? Just, just say yes or no.
Before you say yes or no, I do have a question. Why is Bushy Lane not holding up as well as some of our other dirt roads?
It's gotta be because of the moisture, it's gotta be because it's so very much shaded, and a terrible, terrible subbase. It's gotta, it's gotta have some, it's gotta have that pervious coat on it, and it's gotta have country drainage. It's just gotta be crowned, it's just gotta be constructed properly. Part of, another part of the Chapter ninety funds that I wanna use is to have all of our ten-plus miles of dirts calcified. But that's still an expense. That's over a dollar a gallon now, and it's still an expense to that.
So we've talked about this a lot, the calcification, a lot of other communities do it on their dirt roads, because they're trying to preserve their dirt roads. Obviously, like, I'll give Sassauana, no, I won't. I'll give Brent-Nall is an example, has a lovely crown on it, which degrades over time, and I know you have to redo it a couple times a year. Brent-Nall's issue is?
Heavy traffic.
No, it's not heavy traffic, it's local traffic, and there's not that much of it, because it's a dead end.
It's all local, but it's just, and very little sunlight hits Bushy Lane.
Excuse me, yeah, sorry. Bushy, I was talking about, yeah, Bushy.
Okay, okay. Brent-Nall, on the other side of that coin, folks do not want Brent-Nall paved. Folks that live there, Norm, doesn't, doesn't want Brent-Nall paved.
But the current residents of Bushy do?
And Bushy folks have approached the Board before, they want it paved. And it was the Board that stopped me from paving it. So what I'd love for you to say, Mr. Clark, yes, or take a vote, yes, sure. I'll get started on it right away, but I still have to check the funds.
I'll make a motion that we give Gary permission as soon as he knows whether he's got the money or not to go ahead and get the job done and get it out of the way.
Is there a second?
Sure.
A second.
So just for discussion, I, just generally, we've lost many of our dirt roads. It only increases people's belief that they can go faster. Bushy Lane is a dead end, and though I agree with you completely that its condition is not good, for me, doing semi-pervious, impervious binder coat, as opposed to dealing with it the way we deal with our true dirt roads, seems a little short-sighted. But, we've had this discussion before. I generally lose. The roads are paved all over town, so, off we go. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Nay. Motion passes.
Thank you. I'll get started on that one tomorrow, too. Thank you. And we'll move to Molten Mill Dam. Now, last week, several agencies, Mr. Clark, Mr. Delacuila from Conservation, DCR, DEP, consultants, myself, had a site visit at the Molten Mill Dam location. So what we're waiting for now is the MIPA process, and we have to see if it's gonna affect the downstream because of the water flow, or what the plan is to put in a wear structure, as opposed to a spillway, so we'll have a dam there. So, they're supposed to be doing the mapping, as I'm sure, Mr. Clark, you can say, and I'm just waiting to hear back from them to see where we are with that process. Very important, again, that we get that done before the tip rolls through. It's a costly, costly project, and we'll be certainly applying for additional funds to pay for that.
Has CHA, was CHA involved in this part of it? And did they submit any of the state grant applications?
Yes, they have.
They have, okay.
We're waiting to hear on all of it, and it's just, it doesn't have to be done overnight, but I think most of the Board, well, I shouldn't say most of the Board, Sheila and Skip remember that several borings were done, several tests were done on that area road, and talked about, as I mentioned at the meeting, Skip, talked about a lane closure, a weight restriction, which hasn't happened yet, but we think that that could be done in the future. And my fear was that it would be closed completely, and if the state wants to come in and close a structure, they're just gonna close the structure. So I've instructed them, if construction, if and when construction takes place, it'll be over the course of the summer months, like it was for the rail trail. And that will mean a foreclosure of that road, while that wears, wear structure is being constructed.
So when it comes to the state master list of dams, many of which they wanna open up and be rid of and done with, this one, we're moving forward with repairing it?
Yes. Not only repairing it, but there is really a dam in place, it's a spillway.
A spillway.
Replace the culvert and put in a wear structure.
Is there any effect to that house that's across?
That's the, that's the part of the testing that's being done now.
Right.
Sheila, they're going, they're going further downstream, not only that, that house, but across Miles Rowan to Long Pond, where we've had a lot of problems with excess water.
And that house has a new owner. Is that owner aware?
Yep, they are aware of it.
They are?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay.
So, I'll let you know as that progresses, because it is important to get that done. We can't, we can't do the whole tip process and have to go back in and rip up a section of road to replace the dam. So that's why we're working on it now to get it done. Let's see, I have-
Oh, somebody's interrupting you. Name and address.
Dick Williams, I was there also, and I asked Paige if the dam could be eliminated. I also sent the hazardous mitigation, it's in draft form, but I still sent it to her, to MIPA, so, MIPA. And personally, I just do not see the dam there. I just don't see a stream go through and out. But, you know, that is my feeling, and that's why I was there.
As you did state, yeah, but they're looking into all those, everything, everything that we threw at them, so.
Okay.
We'll let you know. Glenwood Elementary School sidewalk has been dug out, has been lined with gravel, and depending on weather, should be paved very shortly. I checked it several times today, it looks very good, they're doing a very good job on it. So, Sheila, as you know, I guess you were involved in this, and most, probably along with Skip, that takes any ADA requirements from the fifth grade wing out to the front of the school, across that field on an angle, so they'll be able to go with wheelchairs from, if necessary, or any, any folks with disabilities from that wing out front to the third grade wing. Okay, if anybody wants to, it's up there, if anybody wants to see it, you know what I'm talking about, so that'll be done. Also today, I-
Sorry.
Sorry.
When you're there paving?
Excuse me?
When you are there, when somebody is there paving, can they, are they also going to work on the main entrance for the wheelchairs, right in front of the main doors?
From, you mean the front door?
Front door.
That does all work within. We're gonna have to, we'll have to chip some of that, just like we do the rampant town hall. We gotta chip that and get them concreted.
Okay, thank you. Go ahead.
I will, I will. Okay, I sent you all today, I think, as has been approved and signed off by the Board since two thousand and eleven, an updated Winter Ops. So, obviously, you're not gonna review it today, but I'd like you to review that and for approval for the next meeting on the twenty-seventh. So what we've done is a lot of numbers and percentages have changed. Nancy was gracious enough to correct my spelling and do my editing and change my numbers today, so. And also, other towns, so you, so you folks know other towns, are looking to look at ours, because it has been a good plan. We've gone over this with the Board before. So, please review it, and Abby, if you would, please, we'll put that on the agenda for approval and acceptance at the next meeting. That's all I got.
I have my annual August request for you. What are the chances of Mastot getting our crosswalks done for school starting?
Yeah, if, you know what, if they can't, we're gonna paint them. They have to be done. I completely agree with you. They have to be done. I've made enough calls, I've certainly dealt, they've been easy to deal with as far as the traffic island. I'm just waiting for my cobbler to come in, so we can take care of that traffic island in Maple Main. And crosswalks do have to be done, so I will, if they won't, I'm gonna do them.
Which is next Friday?
Is that when school opens?
School opens Tuesday.
Next Tuesday?
No. Next Friday is sort of the deadline. Next Friday is sort of the deadline. School opens the Tuesday after that.
I'll take care of it.
Okay. Anybody have anything for Gary? Thank you.
Keep up the good work.
Look how early you got out tonight relative to last meeting when you-
Yeah, I know, and then you give me 12 items on the end of the- On the end of the agenda here. I still got other stuff to go over, so.
Oh, you do? Okay.
Well, do you wanna get him out of here, or, I mean?
Uh, no, I think we need him to stay tonight. We're gonna keep him. Besides, we're, I mean, look at us. We're two-thirds-
Enough for him.
We're two-thirds gone, and we have Margaret Nardowitz with us. Hi, Margaret.
Hi. I'll be very brief.
You don't have to.
Uh, Mike Sullivan, Chair of RDIC, already spoke a little bit about the municipal solar projects. The other parcels that, um, went out in the RFP were the town's Wheeler Road site and, um, Central Tree site that directly abuts the Wheeler Road site. Um, the initial proposals, technical proposals, came in, uh, with, uh, solar, uh, solar assets cited on both Wheeler Road and Central Tree. The entire Central Tree portion that's actually, uh, hayed, um, under a, a haying contract with the town. So, we asked them to go back and to move, um, the, um, the solar project back toward the Wheeler Road site, um, which they did do in a revised, uh, proposal. I think, uh, Gary, correct me if I'm wrong, but I think the acreage on the Wheeler Road site is about 23 acres as well. Some of it's treed, some of it's cleared on the Wheeler Road site. Uh, most of the Central Tree site that's hay, that's, that is currently hayed is still gonna be freed up for agricultural use, so, um, um, and just to add to what, uh, Mike was saying, um, and for the public's information, um, this has all been pursued because it does provide some potential, um, uh, economic benefit to the town. And there could be significant economic benefit to the town, but there are so many variables, particularly with, uh, national grid and, uh, national grids, um, um, statements, uh, recently, that they have enough capacity on, on their grid, uh, to last forever. So, it, you know, every, all of this is going to be kind of an uphill, uh, battle with national grid. Uh, potential interconnection costs, while some of those, that's, um, connecting the solar facility to the grid, um, while, uh, both of the proposers did project some cost for that. The cost for that could be, um, could end up being significantly more to get to the grid, uh, because it could include upgrades to, um, to substations and things like that that are already at capacity. Um, and then finally, um, the towns, um, the town would colle- uh, collect, um, payments in lieu of taxes uh, from both of these projects, and that is also a variable because the tax, um, the tax burden would need to be determined first, and then that would affect the lease agreement. So, there's more to come, and as Mike said, Beth Greenblatt, who is the town's solar consultant, is, is excellent. Um, she is an expert in the field. She's worked with municipalities all around the state. So, she's excellent, and the town is in good hands with her. So, that's just an update on municipal solar. Any questions on that? No? Okay. Uh, town planner search process. As you know, I put together a small team, um, of, um, of individuals who either had served on the planning board or, um, uh, in the case of Jeff Lacy, I asked him to participate. He is a planner, uh, by profession. Uh, he's currently retired. He did work with DCR. Um, he was an excellent addition, uh, to the team. We had Dick, Norm, uh, Mike Sullivan, and Wayne. They all sat on the team and interviewed candidates. There is one candidate that the team, uh, took particular interest in, and I have been, uh, contacting references, or I have contacted references. And as of this morning, I contacted the candidate to, to let him know that, um, the town would be very interested, um, in his interest in coming aboard here, and he's gonna let me know at the end of the week. So, I can't, I can't, um, uh, release information publicly yet, but I should know something by the end of the week. So, very exciting. This person is extremely capable and has many years in municipal government, doing, uh, zoning, plan review, and all kinds of similar work. So, very good. Um, now FY19 budget, just the state's FY19 budget and local aid, um, there's nothing, uh, too dramatic. I just wanna say that, um, we're gonna be able to replenish a little bit of the free cash, uh, that we lost to the operating budget. Um, our general government local aid was increased in the conference committee's budget by $19,482. So, it's a little bit, it helps a little bit, but it's not, it's not all that significant. Um, and that is, it, actually, if, if you want, we can jump over to the last agenda item, and I can just give updates and suggestions on the DPW Director and Town Administrator Search and Selection Processes. Uh, my recommendation to the board, uh, as you know, we received, um, 16 resumes for the town administrator position. Uh, the incoming, um, interim town administrator, um, uh, has advocated for professional recruitment process. I think the town is well situated, after having gone through the call-in center process, to actually be ready to, uh, interview candidates. We had the screening team look at some resumes, and I do think there are a few viable candidates that the board might wanna, might wanna talk with. So, my suggestion at this point is that I notify, um, the candidates, um, that, um, they'd be invited to open Board of Selectmen interviews if the board is amenable to this. If nothing comes of that, we can certainly look at doing professional rec- recruitment or to try to drum up some more, some more candidates, so.
Yep.
Okay?
Yeah, that doesn't cost us anything. I like that idea.
Well, to, to do it, you've got candidates waiting. Uh, why not interview them? You might find someone who re- really would be a good fit in the pool that we have now.
We've got Bob, we've got Bob and yourself to, to pick off, uh-
And, and Bob and I can-
Better than any assessment center, as far as I'm concerned, you know?
Yeah. Bob and I can-
Abby, could you release the list of questions? I think they're somewhere in our files that we asked originally from our first round back in, oh, gosh, four years ago? Right. Interview questions. I can find the document, but I'm pretty sure you have it somewhere. And if the board members can review that list, um, we can make additions, tractions, whatever. Each candidate will be asked the same questions, obviously.
Margaret, do you have any, uh, sample questions or anything in your-
Oh, I have, I-
Bag of tricks that-
I can't remember those questions off, offhand, but (laugh) maybe when I look at them, I'll remember them. But, um, I will take a look at those, and I'll, um, and I'll, you know, maybe add or, or edit as appropriate to-
Agreed.
To what?
They're not seared in your memory. No.
They're not, no. All I really remember is asking about the use of Chapter 90 monies here. That's really the one.
Does the MMA have anything, any go-bys?
Oh, I think that we could find plenty of, of, uh, sample questions for administrators, yeah. So. Um, so, we're all set with that. You'd like me to go ahead and, and contact candidates? Okay. Excellent. All right, and then finally, it's DPW Director's search. So, the deadline for resumes closed on July 31st. A small handfuls, four, a handful of resumes, four resumes were received by the July 31st deadline. My suggestion, um, in, in moving forward, um, is to have, uh, Gary, Bob, and myself review these resumes as a team, determine who should be moved forward to a board interview process, and then, um, and then move forward in that respect. And so, you'd probably wanna be thinking about interview questions for that position as well. And there might be, uh, questions way back, too. So, and I can, I can look to see what other, what other communities have questions out there that you could look at. Okay?
I'll get it.
Okay. That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you for coming. Uh, all right. We are going under new business. Uh, if you could look in your file, we have a notice of resignation with the Cable Advisory Committee. If I could get a motion to accept?
So, moved.
Second. Uh, and that is Jim Kelly, uh, effective date July 25th, and the term June 2019 expiration. So, that seat is now up for the Cable Advisory Committee. Um, no further comments. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Unanimous?
I just have one question about determination, or the resignations. Are we still sending out that blanket, like, thank you for your service? There's any follow-up that you would like to communicate? Are we doing that or not?
Thank you.
Okay. No, I did, I wasn't sure what the final decision was.
We did, I thought we talked about, yeah, thank you for your service to the community. Yeah, absolutely. Absolutely. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right.
We just accepted it.
Uh, next, under Board and Committee Liaisons, uh, it's something that came up in our Goals and Objectives meeting. Uh, we've gone over it several times. Um, for our new members, it was something that we had before Margaret arrived, and we've come to the conclusion that we probably need to meet in the middle. We no longer need liaisons for our employees and the appointed, uh, people who work here in town, because we do have a town administrator. But for the elected, uh, boards, um, appointed committees that meet and don't always have interaction with us, it seems like a good idea to give this a try again. So, you have your list in front of you. I think everybody sort of picked with some flexibility. Yes?
Sure.
Um, if it's blank, I'm giving it to Wayne unless we hear otherwise. So, are you okay with that?
(laughing). Second.
Okay. Yeah. So, just to list this, Agricultural Committee is Leah, Board of Appeals is Jeff, Board of Assessors is Wayne, Board of Health is Skip, Cable Advisory Committee is Skip, uh, CIPC, I will take, Conservation is Jeff, Council on Aging, Leah, Cultural Commission, Sheila, Earthworks Board, Wayne, Finance Committee, Skip, but Skip, I'm putting an asterisk next to that. We obviously all should be trying to go to as many Finance Committee, uh, meetings as we can. Historical Commission, Jeff, uh, Planning Board, Leah and Wayne will share based on availability, and RDIC, Leah. We had left off WRS-C and Library. Um, I do try to go to as many of the Wachusen meetings as I can. I don't go to all of them. Um, people are welcome to join me. Is there anybody that would like Library?
I can, I can-
How many do you have, Leah? One? Two?
Wayne and I balance-
Three, four?
Planning Board.
Library? Okay.
So, you're saying you're taking the school committee?
We can absolutely share school committee. School committee is a massive job. And as a matter of fact, I believe we received notice, we continue to have a vacancy from our town, um, a rep for, uh, the, is it the Audit?
Audit Advisory Board. We still have, uh, Dan Haynes as the temporary representative.
So, you and I can talk about that and, and share, because they have subcommittee meetings, they have the regular meetings, there, there's a lot of meetings. So, if you'd like-
No, I want you to do it. It's great.
No.
And you say Library, Leah and Wayne?
Leah, no, Leah was saying, since she's sharing planning with Wayne.
Okay, yep. Great.
But this doesn't mean we can't go to them anywhere.
Absolutely not.
No, we just wanna make sure that-
Absolutely not.
We're represented, and-
Yes.
And I'm flexible on any of these anyways.
Okay.
For sure.
If there are trades that need to happen, or it turns out that a meeting night doesn't work for somebody, let's just come back and, and reconvene. And I think the goal that we talked about was that we're going to try to make at least one meeting a quarter. Is that fair? And what we'll do, um, maybe starting in October, is, you know, in addition to our department updates, we can do committee commission updates as well and take turns with that through the year. Maybe we'll go alphabetic, Abby. I'm not sure yet. You can let me know what you think.
Sounds good.
Okay. Uh, the Community Center Regulations Update, uh, this was one of the items that we did not get to last meeting. Does anyone have any questions or comments?
So, who put this together?
I did.
Okay.
(laughing). Or, as I read it, I'm trying to remember.
So, what are you asking of us?
Uh, there were a couple of, this was already all put together, and based on a meeting that the Recreation, uh, Director and the Council on Aging Director had not too long ago, um, they had discussed actually having, uh, third-party, uh, applications come through the Council on Aging instead of being filtered through Recreation. Recreation is actually taking all of the Recreation-related applications. I thought we had a markup.
Did, did you create this, Margaret, or is this-
Did I highlight?
Pulled from someplace?
Most of it, well, yeah, this was already created and approved. There were very few recent changes. And?
And was this in coordination with the head of the REC?
Yes, and, and the head of COA. I'll tell you what, you, what we could do, um, I think that I could probably get a, uh, red line version of this and bring it to you for your next meeting. That way, you'd know where the changes are. There are, there aren't that many. Oh.
I'm fine if everyone's fine with it.
And Abby, did we get any feedback from any of the nonprofits that are sort of regular users of the building on this? Would they have? No? Okay. Okay.
Um, so Recreation uses would still go through Recreation? Any third, like, non-Recreation, third-party-
Yeah.
Uses would go through-
Yeah.
Council on Aging?
Exactly. For example, Weight Watchers uses the building that would go through Council on Aging.
Um, and am I correct? There is no, like, outside cleaner that comes in to clean that building? Is that?
That's correct.
Okay.
That's correct. Yeah. Um, subject to available appropriation, I, and, as in that, this past year, they did actually have, and volunteers, I should say, they did actually have carpets replaced and the floors polished and things. So, they have had some work done-
Right.
Outside, but regularly, it's DPW.
And just, I just, I haven't looked through this yet, but just that it's clear to the users that their response, that there's no month, weekly or monthly cleaners that are in there to clean it up? You don't, you don't?
Yeah, I don't think we explained that in this document, and, I mean, that certainly could be elaborated on somewhere here.
I just wonder if people would-
Pay more attention if they were told, maybe?
Right.
Okay. Yeah, maybe, I think that we could probably find a, a spot in the document to, uh, to note that. Yep.
All right. Everybody okay with that? There is an Open Meeting Rules of Decorum draft that was also available at the last meeting, um, and we put it off until this meeting. Did anybody have any questions, or did they wanna take action on it tonight? Uh, and this sprang from the, um, public hearing that we had a little while ago. Uh, there are other communities that have this. It's not something we've discussed in the past.
I would actually suggest posting it in this, posting it at the entrance to this room as well, so everybody can see it.
And where, where were these, uh, bullet points pulled from? These from any, were we sharing?
Some of them are from statute. Some of them come directly from statute, and others come from other, from other towns. Um, let me see if I can find, um, for example, that fourth bullet down, "The Board Chair Will Moderate All Meetings According to Standards of Reason." Protocols adopted by the Board, including these rules of decorum and law. But I do have plenty of statutory references in here.
And you're good with this, Margaret?
Yes, I am.
I think we should read it, uh, for the record for the public. A lot of the public doesn't know what, what we're gonna put out there, right? Like me to read it as the clerk?
You absolutely may, yeah.
You okay? Okay. So what we're proposing is open meeting rules of decorum. Says that "The Board of Selectmen shall reserve time for public comment on its open meeting agendas. Anyone who wishes to present comments during an open meeting of the Board of Selectmen must comply with these rules of decorum and certain provisions of the open meeting law, including: Persons may speak upon permission of the Board Chair and must stop speaking upon request of the Chair," the statute cited. "No person shall disrupt the proceedings of an open meeting," statute, "by interrupting a speaker, engaging in booing, hand-clapping, heckling, or otherwise causing disruption. No person may discuss the reputation, character, physical condition, mental health, discipline, or dismissal of a particular individual, nor bring complaints or charges against a specific public officer, employee, staff member, or individual," the statute cited. "The Board Chair will moderate all meetings according to standards of reason, protocols adopted by the Board, including these rules of decorum and law. The Chair will warn any person violating any of these rules to refrain from doing so. The Chair may order the use of comment cards, call a recess, or take any other reasonable measure to address violation of these rules, including ordering the person to leave the meeting. If the person does not leave, the Chair may authorize a constable or other officer to remove the person." And that's it. Quick question here, is this obviously reviewed by Town Council?
Yes.
And specifically the last bullet point about someone who has been ordered to remove themselves or to leave the meeting, does not do so, is this legally sufficient for Constable or the officers to make an arrest?
It is. In fact, there should be a statutory reference there because that comes directly from law. So I could add the statutory reference to that. Yep.
And then maybe one last run-through for legal counsel, make sure we're good here?
Yep.
And this is only for meeting, open meetings of the Board of Selectmen? That does not include town meeting, correct?
This does not include town meeting, that's the moderators' meeting. But I'm happy to share these if you'd like.
You need it more, Randy.
Okay. Okay, so we will not take action tonight?
We could take action just pursuant to just adding the last MGL for the last, because, I mean, that's the one that's gonna get us in the glue.
You can make that motion or...
Pending that update and Legal's last one's over?
I'll run it by David, simple.
I'll make a motion, we'll get it done.
So make a motion to adopt pending?
I'll make a motion that we adopt the open meeting rules of decorum as presented with the inclusion of the last Mass General Law statute for the final bullet point relating to the removal of a person after having been ordered.
Great.
Second.
Anyone else? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Unanimous. Okay, so we have a town...
Public comment.
Yes, hi. Name and address.
Brady, Jordan, 51 Muscat Pond Road, most days. If you pass that, most nights you don't have an officer or constable here to remove someone.
Well, they could be warned, right? You could say, hey, listen.
I'm hoping if we called an officer from here, one would arrive in a relatively timely manner. But you're right, we don't keep a constable here.
There's a warning process prior to having somebody physically bounce from here. Sheila said you would call.
And frankly, I think the Board's hope is that it would never even go that far.
That was about, yeah, that's where I was headed.
But the rules are clear, similar to the conversation earlier this evening. I mean, we're specifying our expectations moving forward and its consequences for not abiding.
Okay. Next, Town Property Review Committee. You have the memo from Margaret recommending it. CIPC has also recommended it. This is something that has been sort of thrown around for a little over a year now. You can see that we have a charge given to us with a proposed five or seven member. The noteworthy thing on this, I think, under composition is that it's a quote "professional committee." So that composition at this point is suggested to be one designee from CIPC, one from the Board, one from FinCom, and two to four at-large members who are qualified building or property management professionals. We can have certainly some non-voting advisors such as our Town Administrator, DPW. Certainly it's something we need. It's been a bit of a hole when it comes to dealing with CIPCs, being able to sort of triage what we need and when. We don't necessarily always have, and I think Gary just stepped out, but when it comes to even the school building walkthroughs, it's lovely that we can all walk through, but how many of us that actually do it, you know, have that kind of expertise to be looking at some of the issues that are cropping up? So, this is something we could create tonight with the charge as given to us. We can take a look at this and tweak it a little bit, create it next time. If we did decide to create it tonight, we could then post for applications for our at-large members immediately.
So I should just note that it was about a year ago that a group of our building, our inspectors and some town officials walked through the school buildings. It was during summer recess, and the time is now to walk through those buildings again because our building maintenance agreement with the schools actually calls for an annual walkthrough, so that would have to be scheduled with the schools. And we're almost hitting a year point that a group of individuals, including the inspectors, a member of CIPC, a FinCom member, I think Skip, you were on the walkthroughs, walked through all of the town buildings to assess condition. The issue was that several of us are not qualified building professionals. So we just made, you know, we made notes of what, you know, what looks bad, and we did rely on our inspectors. But to have some professionals participate in this committee would be extremely helpful for the town.
Does anybody want to take action tonight, put a little more thought into it?
I defer. I mean, if this is what you want, Margaret, I would defer to...
Yeah, as always, my concern would be, you know, is this feasible? Can you get, can we get the members and can they stick to the charge? You know, so I think, you know, if the answer is, is yes, that this would be a huge asset to the town.
I mean, I think it's great that there's already a charge here, and I think, and it's a current charge. It's not one that has been operating from forever ago or something.
Right, right. It certainly helps that this is a committee that's made up of members of other active committees. So when they come together, if it is once a year, the charge is relatively clear, you set a time to walk through the buildings, you generate a report, and that goes out to everyone. I think the problem we have had is that the report really didn't have what we always needed because we didn't have an architect walking around with us, we didn't have the structural engineer.
Just one more note, I did, we did provide this to CIPC for reference and comment, and we have not heard anything back yet, so if you just want to put it on hold until your next meeting, we'll try to get CIPC's comment for that.
Okay, so we'll ping them and see if they want to, okay, great.
Thank you.
Thank you. And then finally, Parks and Recreation, we added this a little bit late, and it does go a little bit along with the Town Property Review Committee. It also sort of follows along with what Margaret was talking about with our DPW Director's search. She, Abby, found for us a couple of options on how to possibly format this. I think what more this side of the table, what you guys need to know, and you probably do already, is that we had a Recreation Committee made up of volunteers, and that was only recently disbanded. Again, one of the things when Margaret came on, so now our Recreation Director does speak directly to Margaret, to the new Town Administrator. Recreation continues to be as it's been, oh, and Doug laughed, I was gonna say, I think he would know the date, is it about 14 years now? That Recreation has been fully self-funded and not funded under the levy. That was not the case before that, it is not necessarily the case in all communities, it certainly needed to be the case in Rutland over this past decade if they wanted anything to continue to happen and not simply shut down. All that said, we've had ongoing discussions about the town assets and who manages them, who runs them, who takes care of them. And so, for the most part, what we see in the surrounding communities is a Parks and Rec situation. Now, whether that's a commission, a committee, or whether that is more of a department under a newer structured Department of Public Works is something we can talk about. I don't know if any of you had the time to take a look at what Abby sent over, a couple of other options from other communities. Certainly Sterling has a very strong Recreation Department that we could look to as well. I think one of the things we would need to talk about, if we did choose to put a Parks and Rec Department under the auspices of the DPW, we would need to talk about money and where some of this comes from when it comes to maintaining things like the fields. And I know even just recently, we had a comment on social media about the condition of the playground, and typically you would think of Recreation as having input into a condition of a playground. That's not the case here. So because of what happened financially years ago, we have that disconnect. Karina still spends an enormous amount of time coordinating field time, which of course we're gonna talk about next, and yet, management of the fields is not under her purview, if that makes sense, so.
So I don't see how we can put it under the Highway Department, DPW, whatever you wanna call it, because they can't do what they gotta do now. I wish Gary was still here.
Yeah.
I mean, Gary would say, oh yeah, I can do it.
Right, yeah, it's not fair to throw that on him, right.
Is stretched so thin, so if you want to make a special group to take care of that, fine, I have no problem with it. But you can't keep pushing it off on Highway, DPW, whatever. You can't keep doing it, just can't.
I think you hit the nail on the head, and I think you were the one that was pushing Gary for a while. In an ideal world, how many more employees really would make a full department? We came to five, right?
Yeah, you said five, but he needs, he lost five since he's been here.
Yeah.
And town has grown so much in 10 years that he's been here, it's crazy. He really needs 10, eight to 10 more people to get everything done that is expected of him. No, we can't just throw this at him too, can't do it.
Oh, no. And in fairness, it's gonna have to be a discussion, right, with the new person? And how do you structure it? What do we do?
Well, you just, you just said the new person, the new highway guy coming in? You're gonna say, yeah, you're gonna be headed Parks and Recreation, boom, let's...
Surprise!
No, surprise, surprise, no way, no way. I just, I'll be, I'll fight it all the way till, you know, I got another year left on this board, I'll fight it all the way through. It's not fair to the, not fair to them.
It would be interesting to find out from some of the candidates. Some of them might come from a place that already had it, to see if some of them have any type of experience with...
We can't give them the help. Where are you getting the money to give the Highway Department the peo... You can't give Gary the guys now. How are you gonna come up with four or five more guys, four or five more people to run this thing when you can't even give Gary the help he needs to plow snow and keep the streets clean and keep the town in any type of shipshape?
Oh, funding DPW is a huge conversation. It's in addition to this, it's not, yeah.
Well, this is, this is interesting because this committee does, this committee, the Leicester example that Abby pulled, doesn't even show, doesn't even show DPW as a participant.
Yeah.
It shows a member Concom, one member of the Parks and Rec Committee, two community...
Where's that back to Rec Committee? Where is it?
Well, there isn't one now. Two community representatives, two members from Leicester sports organizations, and town staff is necessary. So it can be, I think it could be structured however best fits the needs of the town.
We've got a lot of change coming with the Town Administrator and the new DPW head, and then hypotheticals and what can be thrown at them. Have this, we should just kick this can down the road a little bit.
Oh, absolutely.
Until after the new organization is here and...
Yeah, and this wasn't for tonight, this was really more of a, but I do think, you know, to Skip's point, we have a DPW right now that is not fully staffed, and how do we want to see that structured? Are we looking for a person who's like Gary, who gets into a truck and plows? Or are we headed towards the person who has the, you know, the engineering degree like some of the towns have gone with? It's a whole other animal, and if we, you know, we haven't done right by this department necessarily in being able to fund it the way we needed, are we going to be able to fix that for the new person? I don't, I don't know.
Let's see what we have.
So if you go one step further, if you go water sewer commission, taking it away from the Board and everything else, then yeah, maybe you could put it toward the DPW.
Yeah.
But where is that? We started something, or started about that a couple, three months ago, and where has it gone? We don't have any committees, nobody looking into it, nobody doing nothing about it.
Well, that's not entirely true.
I have a question into Legal, so Legal's supposed to be following up with me, and I will send a, I will send a reminder about the, it's actually about the districts. That's, yeah, specific.
Okay. Onto old business. So, we finally have the Marshfield lease proposal in front of us. It was, I believe emailed to you as well, right Abby? I saw it, didn't I, in my email? The document? No, I mean, we have it, I have it. Does anybody have any questions?
Are you asking us to?
Well, at this point, unless there are questions, tonight is the night that we could release this RFP if we approve it as to form.
Since its original drafting, the references to baseball and softball have been changed to baseball and/or softball. I would suggest limiting the term of the renewal options to some amount of time less than 20 years. Renewal terms should be shorter than 20 years. Those are blanks right now.
So it's 10 years fair?
I think 10 years is fair, and that would require town meeting authorization for the renewal.
The last one was 10 years, right? 86 to 96 expired 22 years ago. I have a question. Do we need a lease, or could we, would it suffice with like a MOU?
So the only alternative to a lease agreement, which is a lease agreement for exclusive use, would be a license agreement. And the only way license agreements can be executed is if the property is open for public use as well. And I don't see that as this being an option in this case.
You couldn't have a memorandum of understanding saying, hey, you have exclusivity, whoever it's awarded to, to use as you will, however, it's still town property. The town, on a very case-by-case basis, i.e., the Police Department planned Devro once every year or two, the town could reserve its right to step back in.
So Devro did, that's a good example, because Devro did do that with the police. And I guess the way I look at this lease with Marsh is the same way I look at the lease with the school district. We own those buildings, we own that property, we have a certain amount of say over what goes on, and I guess that could be worked into the...
Into the agreement itself, absolutely.
Yeah.
Absolutely. But there, unfortunately, there's really not a middle ground here because you're not really keeping the property open for public use, so the only other option under the statute is under 30B, the procurement law is the lease agreement.
I would just love to see something in there that the town would have some say on a case-by-case basis.
So that's language that could be written into the specimen lease agreement that we would provide as an addendum to this RFP.
I think it could look very similar to the understanding that the school has with the town when it comes to the use of the school building, whether it comes to town meeting, where we reserve the right for town meeting. It sounds like that's what you're looking for.
You would need a town meeting to...
So for example, the school cannot refuse the town access to one of our owned buildings that it leases in order to hold a town meeting.
Okay.
Yeah.
So, so it would be very similar that the awardee of the RFP could not refuse town access?
Yep, the town still goes through a process and applies and, you know, calls in, so there's still a...
Scheduling coordinating component.
Yep.
And that would be written into the lease, or...
It would be in the actual lease agreement.
So we, this is not final, this is not up for...
Well, this is a request for proposals, and so whoever plans to reply to this, whether it is Little League of Rutland or Little League of Rutland-Vermont, they need to reply to this. When we release it.
Mr. Miller is jumping out of his seat there.
I'm Mr. Miller, 27 Brehman Drive, also the president of Brooklyn Baseball and Softball. I think the difference here between what you have with the schools and what you have here is the schools were paid for with school mon, with town money. The town taxes, we took a debt exclusion on those schools. Those buildings that exist at Marshfield, those lights at Marshfield, those are league-owned property. So while we leased the land, using that field does not include those buildings which are private property. And so I think that's, there's a big difference between a school where the town paid for it and buildings that the league owns.
What about the lights?
Owned by the league. And so I think that's a big differentiation here between schools that we're paying for as taxpayers and land that we're doing. The town owns the land, that's it.
And in turn, would be willing to lease it to you for a dollar a year in kind?
I'm concerned about the conversation, about what the town would use it for. It is a baseball field, and I'm concerned that private entities can go step on that field. The town doesn't insure that field, Little League insures that field. And so, I get worried when you start saying that private groups can come in there and use the field. If a football team wants to come in there and use Marshfield and thinks that they can flip the lights on and use it, they're gonna destroy the field. And so when we start talking about allowing external groups to come in and use that field for purposes, that's a concern. And we look at, we look at more what a field looks like, that field's in rough shape, and that's open. And so Marshfield looks the way it is because it is privately, it is privately maintained, it is locked, it is used exclusively for baseball.
I think, I think you might have taken that a little too far. It was a fair question to ask, it would certainly be part of the lease negotiations, and there would be questions asked back and forth, and yeses and nos back and forth. And I think probably what you are describing is 100% privately held, and this is a bit of a gray area when it comes to that. So, I use the school as an example, I can see where you're kind of picking it apart. Well, it's not exactly just like the school, I get that. I think I was using it more as the framework of, it's town-owned, but it's leased by a separate entity, there are agreements in place between those two entities, the lesser or the lessy. That's all, I think that's where I was headed with it. Less about the details, and I mean, I don't, I doubt he was, I'm gonna not speak for you, but I'm gonna say I doubt I was thinking Jeff was headed towards, you know, let's have a MMA battle on the field. I don't think that's where his mind was headed, but maybe I...
You know, I was only sticking to the annual Devro Police softball thing. It would be nice if we didn't have to go to town meeting or something big, either the Board, a Board meeting could say a...
And last year, that was a conversation between the police chief and our president at the time.
Right.
And he said, you know, we'd like to do this, and we said, sure, no problem. And he said, you know, we'd like to do this. And we said, sure, no problem.
Yeah, great.
And so, and I like, we saw, and the police chief's been great to the league and throughout the first pitch before our championship game. You know, there's a, there's a great relationship there, and that would never happen.
So, the way that worked, we would have that just in writing. Here's, here was the process, here it is in writing. Maybe another agency, it might not work out, that one it did, that was great. I mean, we've only done it, is it twice now? Once? Once.
So, so, you know, essentially, the lease agreement could be written to allow scheduling or coordination with town departments, or with the town for town sanctioned activities by agreement between both parties.
Hmm. Okay. That are suited, some with, something along the lines of suitable uses for the facilities or something like that.
Yeah.
Yeah. So, and just for reference, the title of this document is Marshfield Exclusive Use Lease. So. Okay, so in terms of filling in the blanks, we will fill in the book and page. You can see that it says 20-year lease in that highlighted portion in the third paragraph. We just talked about those terms. Did I just hear extensions of 10 years? Is that what I?
Well, the last one was 10.
So, total, so that means total contract term with all renewal options not to exceed X.
10 years, I mean.
Well, that would be 30 years in total.
That would be a total.
If you did, if you allowed one renewal option for 10 years, it would be 30 years. So, you could say 40 years if you want to allow two 10-year renewals.
Yep. Remember, this is just the RFP.
I understand. I, we obviously saw what happened in the last 10-year lease. And there's enough turnover on a Little League board that, you know, your kid typically plays from five to 12, and it's a seven years, and, and most people don't get on until their kid's in their third or fourth year. And so, I worry that 10 years is too short. You know, 20 years, I think seems like, meet the, meet in the middle between 10 and 30. But if you're talking about investing, and we're, particularly since we're talking about potentially adding more fields to that complex at some point down the road, to put a lot of money into a 10-year lease, which Marshfield is not the case, but if you start to talk about adding a new field, which is, you know, 75 to $100,000, a 10-year lease is kind of a short time for that type of investment.
Well, the, the original lease is 20. That's already in. We're talking about.
Right. Oh, you know, I'm trying to, oh, the original is for 20?
This, we should, we should just give you a copy. The contract will be, yeah.
Well, we can't, we can't.
We can't legally give that to you.
Yeah, right. Well, but it's here in the room.
Yeah, the original, the original term is suggested at 20.
Twenty, yeah.
I'm fine with that, if we can have the, the language as you just said, Margaret. That's my only.
So, 20 and additional one 10-year term?
I think, I think that would be good, because then you should probably go back and look at everything. After 30 years, a lot will have changed.
Yeah, that's a long time. So, with all renewal options not to exceed 30 years.
Do you want to hear it?
Oh.
Jordan 51, talking about, you know, the situation you had since 1996. Shouldn't you put it in their words of 20-year, 10-year renewal, and until someone is renewed again? Because by rights, they've been trespassing for the last 20 years. So, in turn, you should put a clause in there when both parties forget that they're entitled to stay there until a new contract is renewed.
That actually exists in Massachusetts state law. That says, as long as they continue to pay lease, it continues on, so.
Did you pay us the dollar? I don't think we have that requirement.
I do have a check for $26 in my car for you. If you always want it, I'd be happy to, it's signed, it's written to the town of Rutland, it's ready to go, but it's $26.
But often, often in positions held, you're in that office until your duly successor is installed. So, what I'm saying is, you may want to put some sort of clause in there so you don't have this situation.
Uh, so I.
But I said it's already.
I figured that would all be part of the lease negotiation.
It will be. So, I think the answer to what you're saying is, either the town has a massive issue and dissolves, or Rutland Little League ceases to be the organization as it is known, at which point there would be phrase, phrasing in the lease to deal with that. But, to the point of like, well, what happens if we all forget? Typically, that's not included in a lease. Because we hope we won't in the future. We've learned our lesson, right?
We can set a reminder now, and I'll, we don't have that 22 years ago.
We have Google Calendar now.
Or you can frame it and put it inside the announcer's booth so that's.
Yeah.
Don't forget.
Yeah. Well, and on the day it's signed, you can have a party and anniversary dates. Okay. So, there was, I think, nothing else to consider.
Well, did our soccer friends want to opine here, or?
That's coming up under Glenwood Field Proposal.
Does soccer want to opine on Marshfield? I don't know if Jonathan will.
Okay. No, you're here for, you're here for Glenwood. Gotcha. Okay.
Yes. Dick, did you?
Yeah, Dick Williams, over. A question I have. Has the town done anything on that field at all because of the dump underneath it?
No.
Nope.
Not that I can remember.
And is the town held liable for anything that's underneath there?
I think that it's a fair question. We probably should, I hate to say before signing a lease, but it should be a conversation that the town comes in and does some core testing.
Is it a cap landfill?
It's supposed to be a cap landfill, but how far back was it capped?
Okay.
And was it done, you know, today's fact that probably is done, you know.
What are you testing for?
Who knows?
Did we have, do we have monitoring requirements to begin with?
I have no idea.
Okay, so there's some.
Boy.
The door is blocked. So, there goes the field. You might as well go those it up and take all the.
No, no.
I was looking for some extra acreage for a dump.
Oh, my gosh. Okay. Are there any more questions? Are we ready to approve this to form and release?
No.
No.
And we want to see the, oh, for the RFP only. Yeah, 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 sure.
Can I have a motion?
Sure, moved. Second.
Thank you. So, that is to approve as to form and release to the public, the request for proposals for the Marshfield Exclusive Use Lease, with the details as noted tonight. All in favor?
Aye.
unanimous.
This has to go in the Central Register. It's going to have to be posted in legal ads in the newspaper. So, there's a process to this. So, it'll be coming, it'll be coming out shortly.
Look at that.
Smiling, I guess that's not bad, right?
It's three years we've been at it.
I think you're doing really well, actually. All right. So, the next thing up, Glenwood Field Proposal. Obviously, last meeting, we went very late. There was a lot of input from a lot of people. It was actually a really, I thought, a good conversation. At this point, we had the packet, and we had our letters, which I actually didn't bring my packet, but you, they were emailed to us, too. I have them. We obviously had comments from Agricultural Commission, Rutland Land Conservancy, Planning Board, Birding Organization.
Boba Link, save the Boba Link.
Right. And there was one more, the APR, the APR information, MDR.
Ag Commission.
Yep. So, I think it's probably time for a conversation. Is this going anywhere?
Well, I think the last conversation was, didn't we give a go-ahead to go ahead for the soccer folks to come back with some sort of a proposal?
They did, well, I thought they mapped out, I thought at our last meeting, they had provided maps of where fields could potentially go and everything. I think we had said, this is by no means a free-for-all. This is saying, hey, we can do this, we give you permission to do the surveying to see what's even going to fit up there. And they had that at the last meeting when we were over in the conference room.
So, the surveying has been done?
It's, no, it's not. Yes. You might, you might want to get right up there.
I should go up here?
Yeah.
Okay, Jason DeStratus, 20 Arrowline Drive, president of Rutland U-Soccer. So, all we've done at this point is a preliminary dream-up of what potentially could fit on that space. We haven't invested money in a survey or feasibility test on what it would take to construct two to three soccer fields on that. So, that would be something we would look to do. Was not my impression that we had that as a go-ahead from the last meeting, as much as that was a discussion.
And we had a discussion about replication of farmland, which we didn't have a solution. We had a discussion that.
Yeah.
Recognized the loss to the tenant farmer who's currently farming that.
And we also had open questions about the lease for haying, which no one can find. There is no lease that anyone can find to date, to date. And we also read over the information, because we had a lot of discussion, and I think, Dick, you were most involved in this, in regards to the school building committee itself. And what it sounds like happened is that the state did step in, make a suggestion that the town put agricultural preservation restrictions on the property. The school was then moved back onto the back end of the property, didn't need that APR. It was never followed through with. So, there is no APR on the property.
We've searched through a lot of files in the board's office, and what Sheila said is, is accurate. That was when the school was being built, and there were conversations between the architect and, and somebody else about suggestions for the property. I mean, it was recognized that there was prime agricultural soils in that, in that area. And that's where the suggestion came about with the, I can't remember which governor it was, the executive order that had, that had preceded.
King, Ed King.
Was it King?
It was Ed King.
So, but nothing beyond the letters. Absolutely nothing that, that I could find. And we spent a lot of time searching through files, so.
I do, I do think it speaks to the fact that if, you know, because it's funny, this is sort of the first time, you know, maybe, Dick, you could corroborate or not, sort of the first time we've had so many agencies step up and speak to the preservation of land. Now, we've seen dozens, if not hundreds of acres, taken of late for residential construction and for solar, and we're talking about some more solar tonight on hay fields. And it was interesting to see the feedback we got specifically on this kind of smaller, relatively project. But it just, you know, made me realize, and I think you were probably here, we've had land offered to us in the past. The town of Rutland really does not hold any preservation on anything. We don't buy, we haven't had the money to buy conservation restrictions. We have not been able to do that. It almost seems like this was opening the door to maybe Rutland as a community is seeing that the land is not coming back, and it's not, there's not more being made anywhere, and it might be time to start, to start doing that. I don't know necessarily that here was the place, but the fact that we had five or six letters from different agencies saying, hey, you had, you had eight acres.
Over eight acres.
Eight acres of hay. It was kind of amazing.
You're talking about two different things. You're talking about property that you already own versus property that the town hasn't owned. It's, there's a big difference.
Right.
We're fighting over something we already own that we don't want to change.
Yeah, there was the.
In turn, we're fighting over, if we fought over eight acres that Jordan Farm owned that was coming out of 61A to go to the soccer field, you'd have first right of refusal. In all honesty, nobody gave a rat behind about buying it for the town because we couldn't afford it. In turn, soccer could do it, just pay the back taxes and, and move on. You're talking about an apple and a grapefruit here.
Except the town, for the most part, with all of its parcels, has not necessarily used them to their fullest potential. You know, so if you look at, I see totally what you're saying, but if, let's look at the heights, for example, right? We, we didn't hay it. We cut down some of the trees and made a little bit of money. You know, we, we sort of, I don't know, we haven't, shame on us, I guess, haven't been that great about maximizing our potential when it comes to the lands, whether it's for agricultural purposes or, or something else. We really, yeah.
Just, just right there, I just went on to the Board of Assessors map, and Glenwood School, went behind Glenwood School, looked at it, the wetlands. I remember walking a long time ago out there. There's approximately 16 acres there with a level difference of 50 foot. And the middle, it been, it was a good flat spot in the middle, so you could have three tiers of fields out there. To me, for kind of, that's where I would send you, you know, hire, hire somebody, go out there, log it, use the money from the logging, stump it, and then put it into fields.
So, you're talking as you head towards the rail trails.
That's correct. Right up to the edge of the rail trail.
And this is the portion that's not already designated wetlands?
No, wetlands, wetlands is further west from there.
Well, you'd have to cross the wetland to get there.
No. No, there's no wetlands, at least on the GIS map, there was no wetlands shown. And to me, that's what I feel that the town should be doing, is, is kind of looking for something like that. I, I would rather see that and then see stockade fences put up, or whatever you're going to chain-link fences, rather, you know, for the parking lot, or areas and fencing and, and those fields. I mean, I'd rather see it wide open. I'd rather see the deer walking through it, and then put the, you know. But that's my opinion. I feel that you should take a better look. And as far as haying up to the heights, never go there. At the, at the present time, there's, there's too much stuff up there. Too much of a headache.
Fat hay.
It's not hayable, you're saying, right?
It is not.
I, I would not hay it per se. It would, it would take a lot of time and money and effort to go up there. You try to plow it, now you're going to pick up concrete and.
We had it a few years after it was condemned, or taken down, and in turn, it was less than fun.
Is there any other, through the chair, yeah, don't mind. Is there any other town land locations that we kind of kicked around at the last meeting that might be suitable for replication, if we pull these valuable eight acres?
Personally, I would say between the heights and Central Tree School, that one section there, that's a fair-sized piece.
That's hayable, or?
Oh, no, no. I'm saying, I'm talking about for soccer or whatever.
Field.
No, I think, let's, let's talk agricultural replication.
Replication? You have no really large pieces to proceed us around. Route 68 is the only one that's got any huge acreage involved. The back part of it, closer to Mr. Jordan's property, is, is wetlands.
Yeah, but that piece has already been earmarked for adult.
Entertainment. That, well, there was so much of it.
Can I just try to adult entertainment?
In the hay field.
Hold on. So, in case anybody doesn't know, in case anybody doesn't know, you need to zone the availability of adult entertainment somewhere in your community. You cannot specifically say no to it. And so, we do have a very specific location, place.
Jordan's Farm?
No, it's, it's 168, and surprisingly, no adult.
Nobody wants to dance to it.
Entertainment group has come forward to try to build something on it yet, but, but it is there and available to them should they want it. But we could still hay it in the meantime.
The only property that we spoke about last meeting, that Sean, I don't remember his last name.
McGlafflin.
And I have spoken a couple times since the last meeting, is, is he talked about the Treasure Valley property that is currently in a state bid, and that's controlled by the state. He wondered if he could do something with, with, you know, Senator Goldsby in doing some swap and getting some eight acres from them. Otherwise, to the best of my knowledge, there is no open space that could be hayed other than what is currently being hayed in town. We talked about clearing eight acres and doing that, and there was some discussion about cost and all that. And potentially, it's not feasible unless you had extremely large timber on there to take the timber dollars to turn it into fields.
What about the, the old Charnick dump? Is that all toxic?
It's very small. They talked about it in a very odd shape, because we talked about the soccer field feeling damaged, from what I was told.
And it's still owned by DCR. It's not owned by Rutland.
Really?
That is correct. Look at the deed.
So, we're throwing our trash on DCR property all those years? Yeah.
And a landfill's not something that we really want to take ownership of, and take on that responsibility, so.
Fighting over the, fighting over the first landfill that.
Yeah, that's right.
World-class.
That's because we turn it into gold.
I think, I think Mr. Williams has a, a great point that you, you should at least consider, going, leaving, keeping some part of the community happy with the eight acres in the front of the school for a potential future use of, of something else. And in turn, in, in aspect of the soccer end of things, in their opinion, it's easier to take a hay field that's open and no trees and no stumps and turn it into soccer fields because there's less process in doing it. From my past experience of clearing land, hopefully, that as long as it's not desert, in regard to it has some trees, you're likely to turn that value of that acre of trees into enough to get rid of the stumps so the boys can do the, or ladies, can do the dirt work to make the fields level anyways. So, in turn, in their aspect, you have another process of cutting trees down and stumping it. Hopefully, it'd almost be a wash in doing it financially and, and, you know, trying to allow the Soccer Association to think that, don't be scared of the trees, make them your friends to, to work in your benefit to do it. And I think it ties into the school complex a little bit better, you know. I, I think it. could be a win-win situation, ties into the rail trail for access in and out of the process. It opens up some more of the space down there by the schools. I think it could be a, a roundabout win, and I think the soccer is, they're scared is because of trees. If they're scared about the trees, then potentially, the, the solar project at Rutland Heights is talking about taking the trees down, and maybe the town could work a deal that they take the trees down and stump it for the soccer association, and it could almost be a wash.
I'm interested that you don't want to deal with the trees to make a hayfield, but it's okay for them to deal with the trees to make a soccer field?
It's, it's not just, it's.
Because should we assume that the land, I mean, so much of the land in Rutland was opened up at one point, right? Anytime we see a stone wall, we know it was opened up?
Correct. Right, and in turn, some of you can think you can go play soccer in the hayfields like they are. They probably do in some less fortunate companies, but the Rutland kids are going to expect more, they're going to expect drainage, they're going to expect it perfectly flat, square, the whole nine yards, so they're going to have to do those of work there anyways. And in turn, they're going to have a process to make that flat tennis-like field anyways. So there's going to be a cost there, even taking, correct me if I'm wrong, there's going to be a cost to do that irregardless. So you might as well take a rough area that you're already roughing to do that, the trees and the stumps, do a little bit of, maybe a lot of those of work, but screening and bringing the right material in to make it all work. In turn, it's a different process. They're going to spend money on the hayfield to reclaim it into a soccer field, okay? In turn, the farmer or the ag commission or the town is not going to want to take those, once you take the stumps down, you're still going to have a long way to go from stumps to a hayfield or a cornfield or a marijuana field. You know, you're going to have to build it up and fertilizer and removing the sticks and stones and, you know, turning the soil over and bringing lots of culminor in and things like that to make that field better. So there is a difference, Sheila. And again, I'm on my side of the fence. My kids do play soccer, so I'm with them as well. Trying to do the compromise thing here.
Yeah, I mean, which side do we disappoint tonight? Question.
You know, I, I know, I, so I'm, I'm all done as a parent at Glenwood. I won't be going up there anymore, so now we're going up there for town meetings and things. But man, I, you know, I spent seven years looking at the difficulties they have with parking, with issues during school events, and issues during even town meetings where we are blocking that roadway because of people parking. And I'm trying to figure out which direction is the best direction. We have similar issues at the community center with parking, right, for those little kids playing soccer or whatever they're doing, you know, at various times, where we don't have enough space. If anything, and I, I don't know who I threw this out to earlier today, if anything, I sit there and I start to wonder if the town shouldn't look into entering an, into an agreement with the owners of the house that lies in between the community center and the school property, because it's the one thing lying in our way of, you know, owning a larger unimpeded parcel and saying, you know, write a first purchase on it or something. But, you know, to your point, it's money we haven't had in a very long time, and when we had it, we didn't, we didn't think ahead like this.
Do you honestly think by putting the soccer field on the hayfield there, you're going to increase your, decrease your headaches of congestion of bottlenecking, because you know darn well, if the soccer kids have a championships weekend, right, they're going to have only adequate parking, and all of a sudden, you're going to have a line back in so you can't get to the school if there's a situation?
Yeah, I haven't seen the final plans yet, so I mean, I don't know.
I'm just using that as an example.
Right.
You never have enough parking because you can't afford to.
Sometimes.
Put parking in, they're going to put more money in the fields.
Yeah, I guess where I, I just sit there and keep thinking, as a town, how many people drive into that driveway and think, that's it, I'm on a school property? And how many of them like you, Dick, enjoy the vista and look over to the right and say, look at my beautiful hayfield? I think you are in the minority. Does that mean we should get rid of it? I'm not saying that, but I, you know what I mean, most people, they enter the property, they go past the sign, they're on the school. They're in the school. That's it. I don't know.
But you can have that same attitude, and let's put eight acres of solar there and generate some income, because the soccer kids are only going to give you a buck a year for that area, and let's get $20,000 for that. So which way do you want to go with this?
That's true.
Clearly, income's not our question, right?
The answer is best interest of the town.
Yeah, it's not income.
It's always the, the answer. So what is it?
I'm not sure if you asked me to be at the microphone for any particular reason, but.
You hold it up.
Yeah, hold it up.
Yeah, I'm happy to help. So I think it's, you know, I think, of course, with all respect to everybody who's been giving so much time to this town, and certainly have valid concerns and, and other approaches that don't necessarily cause me to feel upset or anything like that. But, you know, from soccer's perspective, you know, we have very limited amount of resources to deal with when it comes to doing this type of work that we think will benefit the town. I do think that we are in position to gain or use our influence to gain both volunteer work, donations, and other resources for use for rehabilitating that space into a soccer field or multiple soccer fields, as well as, to some extent, additional parking that could be used for events. Most of our soccer schedule takes place on the weekend, except for practices, which have limited parking needs. So yes, we do have a large parking needs, particularly on Saturdays, where, you know, right now, we don't have adequate parking in just about any of our, with the exception of Central Tree, really, with, we don't have adequate parking in any of our locations. So we would have an impact there on Saturdays and it comes to, comes to a parking, but otherwise, we think it would be an asset to the school, especially during the week. And ultimately, I think it comes down to vision for the frontage in front of the school. And it's, that's something that, you know, Rutland New Soccer can assist the town in improving to some sort of plan that the town wants to see for that space, then that's something that we think we can do. With the fields, you know, being in a back of the school and so forth, you know, the feasibility of doing that is way above my pay grade. The, the additional work of flattening out and working through that space would seem to be more favorable for haying than for soccer, but I don't necessarily know that, that's just a guess on my part. I think ultimately, we actually don't know the true feasibility of that front-facing field. So one of the things that we're really looking for is before the town comes up with an RFP of similar type lease that you've discussed for other sports leagues like baseball, you know, we would like the opportunity to test for feasibility in terms of the type of bulldozing work that it would take to flatten that into one or two, possibly three fields. Some of the guidelines we have in mind would be to not have retaining walls, to try to generate the most natural drainage that makes sense for the entire area, and, you know, do it in a way that aesthetically improves the space. But we don't know if that's something that we can even afford to do if there is impediments that are very expensive to deal with. We just don't have that information at this time. So we're looking for permission to test that as, essentially feasibility for that type of work.
I thought we talked about that, I thought that's where we left off, that's my point.
Jeff, we never, we never made the decision to say, should everything for them work out, and they can put fields there, we're going to go ahead and say, yep, we'll say goodbye to hay and go with soccer. So that's what they're waiting for, I think. Because I don't, and I, I can see this, you don't want to spend several thousand dollars on professional surveying, only to be told, oops, you know what, we were never going to let you do this.
Yeah, that's a good point. Rutland New Soccer is happy to invest, you know, money into our, our fields and so forth, but we hope to be able to use it as a result of that, you know? But, you know, for example, we just spent $5,000 on Central Tree's lower field to improve the drainage or the, essentially the divots, large puddles that it was created. It looks pretty good right now, so we're happy with that investment. Hopefully, it holds up well. But, you know, we're not afraid to do that, but yeah, we obviously are trying to be careful with the money that has been entrusted with us by the community.
I have a question for Dick, for that field space behind Glenwood that is treed right now, about how much acreage is that?
It was 16 acres of that.
Yeah, I measured out on the computer.
Yeah.
All wooded, 16 wooded acres.
Oh, yeah, 16 wooded acres. But there again, I had mentioned too about off of Skyline Drive, the old State Sand Hospital. It was 20 something acres up there, I believe, and that was fairly flat, I mean, really flat up there.
That was the residence that.
And the residence killed that, but there again, did anybody take time enough to think about some kind of a barrier, earthen barrier around the thing or something like that? You know, there's got to be ways of, and it's just, it's just one of those things.
But that's being hayed right now, right?
No, no, no.
Nobody hayes up top of the hill, or?
Not there.
I mean, the wood area, Jeff, not the hayfields.
It's not, we're clearing out the woods to the left of that dirt road there, the dirt road that goes to the reservoir, right?
No, you're up, you're up at Ray M. Erickson's house, Cleo Blair's junior's house.
Yeah.
You got a hayfield there to the left of that, is what he's talking about.
Way to left.
If you look to the reservoir.
Central Tree, and I can't remember what the street is, and then you take Skyline Drive, you go, you drive to the end of it, walk through the gate to the left, and it'll take you right into where the buildings were.
State Hospital Road.
Yeah, the old State Sand, yeah.
Yeah, the old State Sand. If you, you must have walked through there.
I did. Oh, yeah, I did everything there.
Yeah.
The space between State Hospital Road and Wheeler Road?
Yeah, it's just a, it's a flat area in here, then there's a hill that goes straight up almost.
To cliff.
Cliff, yeah.
That, that's also land that needs to be cleared, obviously.
It used to be a soccer field there, they said, way back when. The State Sand used to have it.
So it's interesting, because a lot of these have come up, right? Dick, we, every time we have conversations like this, well, how about here, and why didn't we try here? And they've really never worked out, never. We have the same conversation about Charnak Hill and the dump. Oops, we don't own it, Dick, you remind us of that every time. Skyline and the issues of Skyline, which they went quite far with those seven or eight years ago, and it just petered out to nothing. Obviously, the heights and the development is going on there, so nothing's come of that. I don't, I, yes.
You've got to strain the brain.
So, so remember the map that was out at that meeting with all the town properties? And maybe it's time that somebody or some group take a look at all the town properties, what the restrictions are on those properties, what the conditions are on those properties, whether they're, whether they're wooded or open, whether they have wetlands, now would be a great time to check on that. So, but if, if they could take a comprehensive look at the town parcels, at where their locations are, not only, not only would you get a better sense of the parcels, but, and I apologize, I know this, this discussion is supposed to be around soccer, but there will also be needs for, Dick has mentioned, the cemetery, additional cemetery space, buildings, the senior center, you know, and other things. So to be able to get a sense of what's on any of the town properties would probably be a good start.
Something for the new town plan here.
Yeah. So, so, yeah. So, Dick, you brought up something. I, I don't know, I, I, oh, I know what it was, Margaret just brought up the senior center. I have to be honest, and I'll, I'll just put this out there, in my head, and I, maybe the reason why this seems to make sense to me, just natural sense, is that in my head, I just keep thinking that we will get our seniors something better than where they are and what they have, that it will be central to the center of town, and it will get them what they need as far as kids, you know, everything. Not that building, that god-awful building, but what it will do is open up that god-awful building to whatever we can use it for, similar to what Holden did.
Oh, new town hall.
And that the continuity of playing fields at that point and opening that up to connect to that school property, which, you know, and I think you remember, had we owned the heights at that point, we would never have put the school there.
And where are you going to put the next school, too?
Exactly.
And that's one thing you've got to think about. I mean, originally, it was Truttler that put the school over the bank and where it is.
Yeah.
Originally, we were going to put it up on the hill up there.
Yeah.
And he didn't like that.
And, you know, and, so I guess, I, I sit there and I think that somehow it seems to fit. And yet, I, I honest to God have heard everything you said, and I, I think we need to work on replicating and increasing our agricultural holdings. Personally, I would love to see that as one of our goals.
Yeah, or stop, stop building on available hayable land.
Yeah, I mean.
Pull the next eight acres that want to be.
I have a question.
Yes, and then?
Okay, I have a question, this is probably for Randy, maybe, what work goes into making Massachusetts Rutland soil productive for haying or crops?
The soil map, NRCAS, Natural Resources USDA, has, that has an overlay, defines good, useful soils in different areas of the product. So that, the school, the eight acres there was declared when the school was built as prime farm property. I don't remember the type of soil. Typically, in Rutland, we have a Paxton clay soil as a whole. For an example, the property directly across the street from the Holden trap rock that's a cornfield was not prime farm space, and APR didn't want to buy that when we purchased that from a neighbor. Just to give you an example of different types of soil.
But I guess, from a farmer's perspective, what work on a year-to-year basis, or however frequently are you adding to the soil, what's the maintenance needed for that?
Every day.
Finally got a reaction.
We take soil samples, we manage pH with lime, you have to put fertilizer on of some NP&amp;K, typically on hay ground, we're running sulfur now as well to help increase the yields. If you don't hay it, you might as well mow this carpet for grass. So it takes hundreds of dollars, if not thousands of dollars, per acre to maintain a agricultural property, to keep it in prime agricultural soils, and lots of culminor.
And you've got to have a good base of topsoil.
Organic.
And that, I mean, that was my question, I, some of you know this, I grew up in Lancaster County that has very fertile.
Much different here.
But I know that that's not the, the case here, and that even just for our rinky-dark garden, we need to do a lot of yearly, daily maintenance on that side. So for the field replication piece, I'm wondering, it's not simply finding space and treeing it and stumping it, am I correct? Like, you couldn't just find a field and say, hey, that's going to give you hay, right? Because we took the trees out. I don't know.
Unless you want to bring in tons alone and put on top of that thing.
Organic, it's organic material. It's working, it's working the microorganisms, the earthworms.
Goodness.
All shit.
Yeah.
Yeah, I'm here at Coppola, 126 Main Street. You're, I mean, Randy's, like you're saying about the agricultural and hay fields, the property that Rutland has now, how are they maintaining that property? Rutland Heights, they're just letting it go.
Yeah, no.
And I mean, the money that it's going to cost to make a soccer field or whatever, I mean, you guys have to start doing stuff with the property you own and getting it to work for the town. I mean, all this property is good for fields or good for something, but we have to do something to maintain it, to get it going. You can't just leave it.
Yeah.
You know, I mean, these fields that we, that they hay, they spent a lot of time, a lot of money, you know, and, and just, you know, heartbreaking, because half the time, you're losing money doing this, and nobody's up there helping, saying, oh, we'll give you a hand and help you. They don't. And now you want to take it away from us.
It's similar to what the baseball just said. You look at, you look at Marshfield versus Memorial Field. There's a difference, there's a difference in the field, okay? Because they maintain it for their specific use.
Yeah.
Well, Memorial Field is mowed, I don't even know if it's fertilized, to maintain it for different uses, similar to what Mrs. Coppola was talking about.
Yeah, I mean.
So let me, let me get back to that, because that's a good point, and we just talked about the fact that I agree, I mean, we, we haven't necessarily always done the best we could do in terms of maximizing our, our ownership of, of land, nor have we made efforts to own land that we should have, which would have done other things for us. But to what you just said, so Marshfield, say they've put 40 years' worth of time, money, blood, sweat, and tears into improving that property and making it better for use, they did that without making a profit. I'm assuming soccer would do that as well. With the haying, in a good year, does the farmer expect to get back what the farmer puts in on a good hayfield?
My doors aren't open because I don't.
Okay. Because we get paid, right? We have a. Because we get paid, right? We have a lease, we are paid for the luxury of allowing someone to hay it for five years. The assumption, of, of course, is that there was a mutual benefit there, right? That we were making some money, and the farmer was making money either in the value of the hay or the use of the hay for feed. Is that, so that's...
That's a fair assumption.
That, that makes it, that's hard, because it makes it a little bit apples and oranges, right? Where, because we, we're talking to these nonprofits that are just in it for the, you know, community use versus, I...
You make more money, right, than the farmers than you do the soccer field at a buck?
Yeah, and that came up. Money, money is clearly not the issue here, I just, it was just the idea that this was...
From that standpoint, uh, you know, Rutland Soccer would be, you know, very interested to help, you know, and under, you know, do research in terms of replacing that type of revenue for the town. We honestly don't know how much revenue you generate on an annual basis on those eight acres.
I don't either, Jason.
So, knowing that would give us a better, like, target to shoot for in terms of...
Don't worry about it, I was being sarcastic.
It wasn't that, it wasn't that much, Jason.
Twenty bucks an acre, so you're talking a hundred and sixty bucks.
Well, okay, so...
All right, well, that's fine.
Jonathan has a check.
You have another check?
I have another check in my car.
Yes, Jonathan.
But, no, but, but seriously, we're talking about making the town land, you know, beneficial for the town. We've got the sixteen acres behind the school, that's great, but no nonprofit with volunteers is gonna sit there and say, we're gonna take on the task of leveling sixteen acres of trees, and dealing with that hassle, and potentially lose money on it if those trees aren't, aren't ripe for, for whatever use to stump it. Like, we don't have an infinite supply of money, and, you know, I look at it and say, sixteen acres, that's fantastic, I'll take that for baseball. But I'm not taking on sixteen acres of trees to try to clear, to do it. And I don't, I, I would envision it's the same thing for soccer. Is that, we don't have, like, everybody has a full-time job. We're not, we're not also, we don't have an infinite, we have families and all those, like, obviously if we're running sports leagues, we have young kids, and so there's no time to take on that task. If the town wants to take on the task of leveling sixteen acres of trees and dealing with the, the potential windfall, if there's a lot of money made there, or the potential loss on that, go for it. It makes it all that more appetizing for us to do something with it. But for, for my standpoint, like, sixteen acres of trees, that's, that's not great for, for sports, because who, who's got the time for that?
Yeah. No, I, Dick, I don't know, I recognize that, too, when you brought that up. Some of the projects, especially the ones that you bring up, the big picture, long-range projects. We need, you know, our open space plan is done, we need some, one of those big parks grants for something like that. That's a town project, we can't expect any nonprofit to come in and, and do that for us.
That's true. I mean, it's too bad you haven't got enough forethought, because right off the bat, you should have bought Addison Rittfield's property, because that was right in his household, flat, beautiful right there, it would have been perfect.
It was an offer to us, we didn't have a restriction on it.
Think about how many, how many places around here, you got flat land anymore, and large enough to put something in there. And that's why I'm hanging around here, because of your last thing, your goal, because I wanna know what your forethoughts are for, for the town buildings that, you know, and, and everything else that's gonna happen.
I have a question for us as a board. Would it be, what? What would it take to have the board, like, the town, look at having that, those sixteen acres treated? And see if the town can do it and break even, or take any of the money that comes from it, then it's town, and then it's cleared, cleared field space for soccer or farms, or, I don't know.
Dick, do you think there's good logging down there? You've been down there.
To be honest, it's been such a long time since I've walked through there. I know on the opposite side of the school, heading further west, it, it wasn't a town property, I can't remember the gentleman's name, but my, the trees are so beautiful in there. Lot of money would have been there. But, uh, in there, I, I, to be honest with you...
Mr. Warren, you mean Mr. Warren's property?
No, no.
How about behind the community center? That area behind, that, that field next to the community center?
Uh, it's too close to the wetlands.
Okay.
You got, you got, uh, not much land right there at all.
No, I know, spitballing.
I, I...
Again, I, I'd say look at all the town properties and see where there's opportunity.
The funny thing is, these are long-range.
But I'm wondering, I'm wondering if the town can look at town properties soon and see if there's... Because it sounds like the town's going to need more open space at, for fields or fields of some sort. So if the town can, if it's too much to ask organizations to, to worry about the, the treeing and stumping, is it something the town can do and at least break even, or potentially make a little bit? But then at least they're cleared fields.
Sure.
I don't know.
It's the Town Properties Review Committee.
And the planner.
Right.
Jason, can you get yourself a drink, or?
So, to, to every, we've talked about a lot of big picture...
We're gonna try to get Kurt Leslie to come back. And to me, something like that, a town forester, you know, and have him take a look at some of this stuff. What he comes up with, for a timber, how much you could get for the timber. And calculate, he knows what the price is nowadays. And, uh, you could turn around and put it out to bid, and the bid is for them not only to take the trees down, but also to hire somebody to stump it. Stump it and either grind it, or gotta get rid of the stump somehow.
Not stockpile them. Or, no, not stockpile them, no way.
Grind them.
Grind them.
They're grinding all the field down.
So... Anyway. This sounds more macro, long-term, big project. We still have one in front of us that's a little bit more micro-local. We need to give them some direction.
Who is the, the farmer who has the supposed contract, or?
Mike Dennison at OCAM.
So, guy, oh. So he's an OCAM guy.
He used to be a Holden guy, he moved from Holden, from Holden to Rutland.
I mean, to...
So who, who decided that answer?
He was a bid process, DPW would come in and say, we've had the following bids, the following hay fields, and it would just be, yeah.
But, I, my understanding is that contract, if it exists, goes through another year, correct? Twenty nineteen, twenty twenty?
Twenty nineteen.
Sorry, twenty nineteen, sorry, yeah. So, I guess, I still question, I don't know what the cost would be to have a forester or someone come in and look, but if we're still, if that field is being hayed for another year, could we have that, that prelim work with the other fields, potent, field space potentially done?
Good question.
These are not mutually exclusive, though. We can be doing this in parallel, we can get a forester in. I think the question is, all things being equal, if, if it, if we find out that the front parcel that they've done a little work on is viable for soccer, is it something we're willing to do and give up hay? If we're not, then yeah, we need to go gangbusters on some of this other stuff, but we can be doing that anyway.
Should be doing it anyways.
Right. So we can be doing what you just suggested in parallel, let's add it to our goals, and it, and it really is part of it.
It's an objective.
It really is.
It's a short-term objective rather than a goal.
It really is part of our objective and part of the, the committee that Margaret wants us to put together. So we can add that and have that going on, it doesn't change the question tonight.
Right, no, I'm just...
I think it's a great question. I actually think it's a great, I think it's a great idea, and it's something the town should move on.
Yeah.
And that's why I have so great respect for all those farmers years ago, that take time to pull the rocks and everything out in those fields. That's why I feel I, I hate to see anybody take a field and turn it into something else, because of all the hard work that went into it.
How many acres did we lose from the farm on Main Street when we didn't buy that?
Thirteen, open.
Thirteen open?
Open, yes, but it was, uh...
Sixty total.
Sixty something acres.
Sixty total thirteen that were already open.
Which included the pond.
Yeah.
Yes.
Thank you. Randy Jordan, fifty-one Muscat Bog, Ag Chairman. On September thirtieth, two thousand and three, there was a special town meeting, June thirtieth. And, uh, Mister, on Article One, it stated that the, the motion was to purchase the twenty acres, a parcel on Glandon Road, and paraphrasing here, the site for a new elementary school facility and related activities is to go on there and to be authorized a bonus selection to enter into a contract necessary to do that. And if you read between the lines there, if you put up permanent structures, such as a chain link fence to keep in the thing, it's not really school activities, if it's going to a private entity, if you, similar to Marshfield.
They changed their tone, though, of their viewpoint, that they would open it up to school.
Oh, yeah, I mean, where it's necessary to put up a fence, uh, we're not even sure of that. I don't have any plans to put up a fence. Um, when it comes to the use of the fields, uh, we'd ask, in exchange for taking care of it, that we'd have the opportunity to do the scheduling, so that we can schedule our games and practices. But we, I don't see any reason why we would say no to somebody else using the field as long as they committed to also care, you know, using it with good care.
The whole issue's coming down to the, the loss of hay for...
Yeah.
A farmer who's not even a Rutland farmer. That matters? I don't know.
Yeah, but the next contract could go to a Rutland farmer, so...
But for how much money? I mean, I think, you know, the town is, you know, what's the benefit to the town if it's going to somebody, some other farmer for a hundred and sixty-eight dollars? I mean, I, now, I, but I get the...
It's not a financial benefit.
Yeah, this was never about, this can't be about the money.
It's about the best interest of the town.
Well, I agree, and I think that that's really what it comes down to, in terms of what does the town wanna do with that frontage space? Is it best for youth sports and/or the, you know, children of the community?
What I, well, what I get stuck on that is that, I think as long as I've lived here, this town has not been able to uphold its agreement with its taxpayers in providing the services that other communities do, right? There are other communities that are building these fields and building structures and putting in skateboard parks and building senior centers, and we've been in a holding pattern now for over a decade, because we just didn't have the money to do any of it, right? And it's because our population has been increasing, ironically. And so when I, when people come before us and volunteer to give us value-add, I, I find it really hard to say, well, no, you know, no thanks. I, we, how often do we get that? The, the fact of the matter is that Marshfield looks far better than it ever would have looked, to your point about Memorial, had the town been responsible for it. And that's been our situation now for a lot, you know, a long time. The, look at the pool, the money that has been poured in, no pun intended, into the pool was all privately funded. The town has not put capital improvement money into that pool, not for the ADA compliant chair, not for resurfacing. It was all privately funded, and we're one of the few communities that we've somehow gotten away with it for a long time. And, and here we are again, we haven't been able to figure out a way to put in our own soccer fields, and we've got an entity willing to do it, and I...
Let's call a vote, then. Give this man a resolution.
Okay. I'm looking for a motion of something. Vote, yes.
Debbie Carlson, fifty-four Emerald Road. If you look at the original warrant to, to vote to take that land out of agriculture right now, actually to, to do anything with it that's not used as a school-related activity, so you would have to open your fields up to school use as well. Goes directly against the warrant article. Okay, it's also, um, it's also privatizing that land, which right now is open to the public. People can still walk through it and everything else, which I'm sure you're not gonna be real thrilled with people walking dogs and whatnot through it. I can't speak for you, I'm just surmising. There's also rules in place that the town can't just take by eminent domain, land that is being farmed without a certain process, that, um, this is per Frank Deluna, who's the attorney to the Mass Farm Bureau. That there is a process involved.
It can't take...
Without a land.
Yeah, it can't take its own land away from itself.
Without a lease.
I'm just saying, this is per, per the attorney.
If there was a lease, then you're right, that would be technically your property.
I think there were, I think there were stronger controls that absolutely could have been put into place when that school was built. What are we looking back now, thirteen years, that weren't taken?
Had the town put it into APR at the time, you wouldn't be having this discussion.
Which gets us back to protecting land, you know, and I, yeah, so our, back to our goals. I think relative to what you brought up, certainly that's gonna be part of the process of looking into everything. You know, we'll, we'll end up doing a legal vet of everything, including, you know, the survey or going into the Worcester County Registry of Deeds and see what comes up. So, yeah, you're, you're certainly not out of the woods. Again, no pun intended, but it's getting late. Okay, uh...
I'd like to hear you make the motion.
I actually cannot make the motion.
You cannot?
Sorry.
Are we, are we, um... The, the, what we would be allowing this evening would be for them to begin their, um... The pro, well, I don't know, what would we be allowing?
Well, I, I think what we're talking right now, and again, we don't know for sure of anything, but what we do know is that we have a request, um, from a nonprofit in town to put soccer fields onto a property. They don't necessarily know yet if they can do it. But if they find out they can, they need to know that we've allowed them to go ahead and move forward with it. And we, and by the way, this would be predicated on approval of the site plan, and a lot of other things, I'm sure.
Skip, do you have a position?
Do I have a position? No, I don't, I don't have a posi, I do, but I don't. Because I would be kinda leaning toward the farmers, so I would recuse myself from this vote, if there was a vote taken. Because I know what it is to make hay fields, because I made one, and Randy can verify it, in the back of my place. It took me four years to make it, and it's not finished yet, all right? So, hey, I would... I would rather see, as Dick said, the bars cut down and somebody go in there and make a field for them. If you had enough money to throw at it, yeah, they could do it in a short period of time.
I think, I think regardless of what, what we decide tonight, we need to look at, you know, the town properties and replication and what we can do to maximize usage, if that's opening up more farmland, that, that was previously farmland in particular. You know, that, that's...
I have a question, so we are confident, or would this be pending legal, like, we're confident that legally that's, could be not kept as agriculture?
Yes, I'll tell you frankly, my concern is the lack of documentation behind this, these, these fields. And I, you know, we haven't been able to find a lease. We've gone back, we've looked at letters between the architect and others regarding this, that old executive order, but we haven't found anything definitive on that, so it doesn't look like the town acted on that. I think it would be subject to any and all, you know, document, research, and, um, and legal applicability. Not to mention the fact that the, um, the aqueduct also runs under that property. So, and, and I know you're not putting in foundations or anything like that, but I don't, we, we don't currently know about the restrictions that would apply to that either.
I think the fact that a payment, even as small as it is, a hundred and sixty dollars, the fact that a payment has been made to the town is an obligation, is some sort of a, like an ad hoc lease, if you will, for... I mean, what is the term of the, the payment? Is it for the growing season, or?
Yeah. If you paid it, you gotta pay it in April, and you have it through the following April. Well, it's already been made this year.
Yeah, but it's a, it's a three-year lease.
It's a five-year one.
Five-year lease.
Which, which we're seeing is up next year, or?
At nineteen, yes.
Thank...
Even at best. Which would...
We have a ten, we have a ten-year renewal process, too, just like Marshfield, so we can renew that automatically.
So nothing, nothing would be done until next spring anyways? Am I right? Next April?
They're technically still haying it.
Yeah. No. So nothing would be done until April nineteenth, right?
Yeah.
And that was my question.
But you're breaking the lease?
For the town to determine, sure.
I, I like, I, I appreciate that question. I actually think it's an opportunity for the town. It's a, it's a, it's a small opportunity, but it's an opportunity for the town to get a forester in here to look at, you know, the parcel behind the school and other parcels big enough to be able to accommodate various things, whether it's agricultural, agricultural replication, or fields, or what have you.
Which is a separate issue.
So, and I have a question on...
It's a parallel, parallel issue.
I know, it's a parallel issue, but I think it's a good idea.
Maybe this is to Jason.
Sure.
What, how long would it take for you to have, for soccer to have that field kind of surveyed? And I know the legal side could take however long, that's not anything in, that you can handle. But the field work that you would need to do, how, like...
Feasibility or actual preparation?
Feasibility, I guess, because that's what we're talking about right now first, right? It's a feasibility piece, like, the legitimate feasibility piece. So I'm wondering if we have it, if, if I make a motion to table this, what leadway would you need?
That's a good question. You know, we, we'd need to essentially source someone who could provide us a, a feasibility, you know, in terms of the fields, changing of the fields with bulldozing and everything else. So, what, you know, what's inside of that? We'd have to find out, so I don't actually have a timetable on that. But I would say it would be minimum month, probably maybe two months.
And not...
It's a busy season for us, uh, in terms of fall soccer, um, so there's, I have to at least consider... It's a busy season for us, uh, in terms of fall soccer, um, so there's, I have to at least consider bandwidth of our, uh, own resources over the next couple of months.
Question through the chair.
Would you have, um, I mean, would you have intended, had this gone through tonight, uh, would you have intended to actually had those, have those soccer fields built and ready to go for the fall?
Not this fall.
Okay, not this fall. So it's still moving out a year, say?
I mean, yeah, you know, even thinking of doing something in time for next fall would be a very aggressive timeline, in my opinion. So, yeah, it's all, it's
Would there still be, would there still be a lease, uh, agreement with Rutland Youth Soccer after?
If, regardless of the parcel, there would have to be a lease agreement for the town's real property. So it doesn't matter if it's that parcel or another parcel, there would have to be a lease agreement. Um, in their case, because it, if, at Glenwood, because it would be open to the public, the board may be able to execute a license agreement on that particular parcel. So, that's something to think about, and that wouldn't be as, as costly or time-consuming.
Are you leaning towards table on something, or do we want to go ahead and say?
I, well, I personally was leaning towards tabling it for now and continuing that legal piece, the legal groundwork, groundwork piece, so that we can figure out what is actually going on with that parcel in the first place. As well as getting hopefully a forester in and everything to figure out. I, I mean, part of me would hate to say to them, yes, go ahead and do this, only to find out that they've spent however much money they need to spend to get it all taken care, eh, the feasibility, their feasibility side done, and then to come back from the legal perspective and say, actually, there's this big, no, no, we can't.
You're not asking for any of that upper sixteen acres.
No, no, I'm not talking about the sixteen acres, I'm talking about that eight acres in the front. If we still don't know if it's still this big gray area with the executive order from
I, I don't believe the town did anything with that, but then again, I, I wasn't here in oh-three, so I don't.
I think, I think our office did a lot of research.
We did, we went through files.
I think unfortunately, you know, we've seen this before, obviously, we have somebody here in the room that has seen it before. The town has seen things slip through the cracks. So at this point, at least to me, it seems clear that there was a, a strong suggestion for an APR restriction on the Glenwood property that was never activated, never actuated. Um, and that the hay contract, um, for whatever it's worth, might turn up. Um, and I think it, it, we, everyone seems to think that should it turn up, it will expire in twenty nineteen and, and bears some discussion.
The ver?
Oh, sorry.
Go ahead.
No, I was gonna say, I'm just reading an email from, um, the Rutland Land Trust when they had referenced the executive order one ninety-three attached, made in nineteen eighty-one, by then Governor Ed King. That very, very clearly relates the value of the special agri, agricultural soils to the Commonwealth even at that time. Um, quote, "State funds and federal grants administered by the state shall not be used to encourage the conversion of agriculture land to other uses when feasible alternatives are available." Um, they made a public records request to the Massachusetts School Building Authority to see what funding source was used. They provided with a, they were, we were provided with a document that shows that the town did receive state funding via a total facilities grant. The town purchased the property with town monies, but used state funding to construct the school. I don't know how that interprets, I don't know.
That's something we'll have to look into. Yeah, we absolutely, um, Glenwood, Glenwood was constructed with an MSBA loan. Um, how that relates to Ed King, um, and again, I, I think that's what we heard from MDR, which is their recommendation that at that point, given the opportunity to cr, construct a school on it, the town was butting up against, um, some of that documentation from the King era and recommended the APR that we didn't, that we didn't do. Instead, we moved the school.
I think Louis Canacchio backed out of the
I, I actually considered calling Louis, and I have not, I haven't done that yet, but yeah, he, he, um, you know, anybody from that committee, it would be valuable to talk to them. You know, we had MSBA issues at the end with that project too. We had, you know, monies that ended up kind of floating out there for a while that we finally got back, so we certainly know how the school got funded.
I can't remember if Doug Briggs was on the quarter selectmen at that time too.
He was on there.
Yeah, but he wasn't on the committee, I don't think. Is his name on that building? His name is on Central Tree, I don't think it's on Glenwood. But anyway. You think it is?
I think his name is on the
Might be.
Wasn't it under the impression that your last meeting, the roundtable discussion that you had was, all this similar discussion came up. We all want the kids to play soccer, we all want to farm it. How do we come to a compromise? And there was a lot of direction going toward that Park and Recreation Committee to do a long-term plan.
Recreation Fields Committee.
I don't see why we have strayed from this at all. I realize these guys want an answer tonight, but
No, I'm gonna, I'll, I'll, I'll go back on that. I, I don't think this is they want an answer tonight.
They want to know whether they can proceed with caution.
They do, and I kind of don't blame them, because let's face it, we've spent probably at last at least five or six years running around things and never making a decision. I mean, look how long it's taken us for Marsh. Look at how far we went with RDIC. Nothing came of that. We talked, we talked, we talked. Nothing came of that type. I, I don't think this came out of the blue, I guess. Uh, you know, we have pursued other avenues, um, and they didn't always all work out. It's not to say that others won't. We might, we still have the potential and the need to build something like Hubbardston has, if not bigger.
I give you credit, but I'm thinking if you make a decision tonight, yay or nay for the, the eight-acre field, is you may lose the opportunity for the bigger Hubbardston plan or something, if you don't do proper planning. I realize that three years of contracts and all that, I just don't like to make hasty decis, hay decisions.
It's definitely getting late.
Wow, that's my bedtime.
I mean, I struggle because my kids play soccer, and we need more field space. On the flip side, we heard from an unprecedented number of town groups, and they were all in unanimous agreement to keep that as a hayfield, and that there has to be other places in towns to investigate, and have actually done some legwork as far as talking to trying to come up with ideas for us. So that's where I, I struggle.
Uh, yeah, we're still back to the same spot. Again, I, I think we can be doing parallel work on everything that was suggested tonight. We need to talk long and hard, and this is another goal, about agricultural protection in this town and whether, you know, what the town's role is. Because right now, the town's role has been to sit back and hope that it happens, and that doesn't work. And to Dick's point about maximizing, you know, and others too, about maximizing our field space, your usage of some of our wooded properties, and to, to your point and to what Randy just said about the idea of, you know, and a lot of us thought it would be at the Heights, a large-scale town park that we really don't have yet because Memorial Field just doesn't fit the bill. It's enclosed, and it's feeling smaller all the time. Um, those are all still true.
Yeah.
Yeah, I, I'm still stuck with the, regardless of what happens with any of that, do we believe or not that it's the right decision to give over land, um, to field space there in particular? I don't know that it would, I, I wouldn't want to set a precedent tonight and say, we're the board that couldn't care less about haying fields. I hope that's not true. I would want to see us replicate them. I think the question, and, and maybe we're not ready to make it tonight, is what is the best use of that property as a whole, where the school is on it, has the field and has the playground, and it has the connection to the community center? That's kind of in my head, I guess, where I'm headed. That doesn't mean
Yeah, I
And there's no parcel at the Heights that would be of interest to Rutland Soccer?
They've absolutely expressed interest in parcels at the Heights, and they were
Absent. Or the Maple Ave prime.
No, there's too much, I mean, if you're, the, the farmers don't want to deal with that because they have foundations and concrete going in, that's why they want to hay the fields. What happens when a kid trips over one of these pieces of concrete and breaks a leg? I mean, they can't, they can't do it. The amount of work that would take to do that field up at the top of the hill is not worth it.
I think, you know, as a resident of this town, I would love to see the plan for a, you know, recreational space that, you know, potentially included soccer and or other uses. That's fine. Um, I think that's important. Do I have faith that that's going to happen in the next five years? It's limited. So Rutland Youth Soccer essentially is saying, you know, in the absence of that larger plan, we think that this is a great space to work from. If the town is really, really going to work towards a plan that we could be a part of as a total, then we'll dedicate resources towards that end. Uh, if this is the impetus to make that happen, great. Um, I'm fine with that. Um, but if there isn't a plan for that, then here's our plan, basically is what we're saying to you.
Yes.
Does the soccer fields have to be in the, near the center of town?
Do they have to be? Uh, no, uh, you know, I don't, I mean, I, I'd like it to be in an area that has good access uh, road-wise, you know, um, if it, if it was, you know, solely for the use of soccer, for example, you're just talking soccer fields, then, yeah, we'd like, um, you know, good road access and so forth. It doesn't have to be the center of town, but that's partly why
And how many acres do you think, you know, it would take for you to set up a soccer field and think of the future, at least twenty years down the, down the pike here, how many acres do you think you'd need?
Twenty-three, just like the solar field.
Um, yeah, so right now, if we were to add two to three soccer fields, we know that's about eight acres, so, um, yeah, ten, eight, ten, twelve acres would probably be pretty good.
Okay.
Um, I guess it just depends on the land and how much sloping would be necessary with, you know, the expense of putting in retaining walls like you see in Paxton, for example, is probably outrageous. Um, but they've got these huge tiers between, you know, one field and the next, if you go out to their, uh, their complex. Um, I don't think we could afford anything like that, so, yeah, probably.
Okay. Good to know. I'll, I'll go through my maps.
Yeah, I mean, let's work together on that, you know, you know, if this, if, if this truly isn't meant to be over here, um, you know, one of the things that is nice about this space is we have sheds and we do have a couple of buildings we can use for shelter-in-place scenarios. So for example, we hosted camp this past week at the community center, and there was a threat of thunderstorms, and we talked with the, uh, council of aging, and they, of course, were happy to let us go in there if there was a thunderstorm. So we need that type of shelter, um, in those circumstances. Uh, so, for, you know, we'd still, we, you know, that, that's one of the things we'd have to work through, you know, in, you know, any of these types of conversations.
Thank you.
Um, Randy, does the agcom have an official position on the whole solar field issue and that loss, and whether or not those fields will be able to be reclaimed? We all, I, we've had, I've had this conversation now with two different people in the past week about how every solar project that's put in, part of the agreement is that decommissioning, whether that's twenty or thirty years, will be removal of everything and, right, returning the land to its original state. And I wonder, we're not there yet. We don't have any of them that have aged enough to know what's actually going to happen. Will those companies still be around? Will they have filed for bankruptcy and they're long gone? We don't, we don't know yet. And it, it always makes me wonder, because when we talk about a soccer field, or I suppose even a baseball field, which I think takes more, but can a soccer field, if abandoned to a bigger project twenty years down the road, be reclaimed? It's, uh, you could sit there and say, well, it's just grass. It's not, it's not haying, right? I get that. But have we ruined it forever?
The soccer field?
Yeah.
We don't have an official position, but as a personal opinion, probably not.
Okay.
I mean, as long as you don't put permanent structure.
Yeah.
Chain link fence, I don't know what you do for your goalposts, bleachers, things like that.
Yeah, no, right, right.
Bleach, well.
Parking, asphalt.
Asphalt, right. Okay.
Asous material.
You start laying some
Yeah, I mean, certainly from a parking standpoint, there's plenty of examples of a gravel parking lot that are very suitable for soccer. If that's the solution, if that solution is less, has less impact on the long-term feasibility, you know, long-term use.
I, I don't want, Randy, I, I personally know we need to finish this up. I don't want you to think, I, I don't want there to be an impression that we're rushing into this. I feel like we've been circling this, circling this, circling this for so long. I, there is logic to this in my head, um, in many ways, and I, I can't speak for everyone in the room, but I, I don't know that I'll ever get over losing that farm on Main Street. Um, you know, and to me, that was just one example of Rutland not taking advantage when it could. And so I get it. I, I, I do get it.
Let's, let's back up, okay? We, we all know that you are a major cheerleader of that Rutland Main Street property
Yep.
with others.
Yep.
But what was your purpose of that? It wasn't the town of Rutland was going to buy it to put a hayfield there and put it out to bed. You had to have some goal. Was your soccer fields going there, and if so?
No. No, my expectation was that that would be maintained as a, as an agricultural vista. No, actually, that was right in my wheelhouse. I expected that we would have been able to maintain.
Do you think the public impression, or the potential of funding to follow you would have been different if you says, hey, town of Rutland, let's save this, let's keep open space and prevent the houses from being built there, but we'll, we'll buy it and we'll turn it over, we'll send an RFP out for soccer fields? Do you think your impression would have been different?
I don't know. We never got there though, did we? We had that option.
I understand that, but I just, I think that you're, you're talking about open space, save the world, help the farmer, keep it green.
Yep.
Now you're kicking the farmer down the curb here at the Glenwood School. It's, it's, again, it's different because five hundred and twenty-five thousand for thirteen acres versus free over here, it's much different concept, in my opinion.
Just to let you know, uh, through the chair, town of Holden, uh, has in their budget fifty thousand dollars a year that goes into a, um, agcom for ten years for purchasing anything that comes out of sixty-one A, if they feel like it. But isn't that nice? They put that amount of money aside for such a, such a thing.
Something to think about for, something to think about for solar lease payments down the road. To earmark or, or move a portion of that into open space funding.
I mean, Conservation Commission is sitting on how much right now? Do we know?
On land?
On money.
Oh.
Oh, that's
They often money for that.
That's their wetlands protection fund.
We can't go that way.
No, I'm saying there's, there's money available.
You just opened up another camp. No, uh, can a conservation restriction be utilized as a soccer field, a piece of property?
I don't think so.
Usually they're all wetlands. No.
Sometimes it's
It's not wet.
I'm thinking
Sometimes it's watershed.
I just, I was just looking at the one between Devil's School and, and
We've talked so long, we have tape issues, I think.
No.
No.
No, I'm actually here to answer a question he just asked.
Oh.
Okay.
Uh, Peter Crane Nate's Way, up until about a week ago, I would have answered the question, can a conservation restriction, restricted land be used for soccer fields? I would have said, yes, absolutely. And now I'm not so sure, because I'm reading up on it. We, we've had the discussion, the Conservation Commission, about what is passive? What are, what are, what is passive recreation that's allowed? We've been, we've started the discussion, and I found a definition from the EPA that says that a soccer field or a baseball field, nothing that requires a field, a structure, a structured playing surface is allowed to be passive recreation definitionally. That's the EPA. I have not found the state equivalent yet. We're still digging into it, but I'm just here to say it's an open question, so we don't know for certain that passive recreation includes soccer or baseball or any other structured field sport.
Okay.
Sorry.
Thanks, Pete.
Mr. Happy Strikes Again.
All right, I think we've beaten this to death. What are we doing tonight, if anything?
Well, the gentleman, Margaret Jackson?
I, well, I, I, I just keep thinking about the forester, and somehow, I, I, if, this is the third time I've, I've mentioned this, this, this whole parallel path. But unless, and I'm, I'm totally agreeing with Randy here and, and Dick, unless the town uh, moves forward with, with looking at the parcels it owns and everything that's on them, and looks at the possibility for logging to be able to free up or to create some usable land in some of these parcels, we're not going to get very far. The options are going to be extremely limited. So, it seems to me that we have to move forward doing that, too.
Oh, yeah, I agree.
Right, which is a sec, which is a second issue, separate issue. These gentlemen are asking for an up or down vote.
The problem with the logging is logging just for the sake of doing it without a plan to do something with the property later, leaves you with what, right? Then we're going to wait another ten or fifteen years, try to log it again.
Then we're going to wait another 10 or 15 years, try to log it again. All right, let's...
I am, I would not, and this is probably going to not be what you want to hear, but I would like to not take a vote on this today, tonight, but continue, continue to have that fire under us to move forward. Because I feel like I still am a little bit stuck that it's a little bit short-sighted. It's a little bit kind of, it's what's available right now. It's the best of what is cleared right now, so let's take it. And I wonder if there's a, if we can do this on our side as the town, if we can actually create a better space for you.
And add to that, but good, nothing could possibly be done until April of 2019 because I think we all agree that we need to honor whatever, whether it be verbal or otherwise, we need to honor that, so...
So I, that's, yeah, I mean, I know that that's kind of not what you want to hear, but I would like to keep it as a priority for us to keep it on our forefront so that you have an answer by...
It's fine. Jeff owes me a drink, but other than that, it's fine.
Big time, yeah. That was an hour ago.
Why all of you a drink?
Okay.
So while we're sitting right here, why don't we give Mr. Williams the authority to get the forester in here and go look at the property instead of waiting another three or four weeks?
Sure.
And see what they have to say.
You're talking about just that one or multiple?
The whole town. All the town, the land the town owns. Just look at which ones and then you can tell whether that possibly would be good enough to, like hayfield or soccer fields out of it and how quick it could be done.
I'll get ahold of them tomorrow and, and I'll talk to them and see what we can do, what we can set up. Then I'll let you know.
Mr. Williams, when you go to do the, the spot behind Glenwood, I know I'd love to go walk it with the logger while you do it and I'm sure Jason or somebody from soccer would like to walk it too.
Sure. But you've got all these, you've got little pieces of property in town that you... Yeah. Check 68. I'll check on top of Wheeler Road next to the water towers. I still feel that's a, a nice spot too, but who knows?
It's always not even extending that far up.
Abby, can you send all of us, including Dick, a list of the properties? I think we have the map.
The map, yeah.
So that we're all on the same page?
We've got the spreadsheet too.
And maybe you can send us a date? It's not exactly a meeting, but just, you know?
I'll check it out, see what happens.
When do you, when do you honestly hope to have a planner in place? And, and will a planner, instead of putting all the pressure on everybody and waiting for a committee, is a planner the person to come in and say, "Hey, guys, you know what?"
I, I actually think the community development portion of this is and planner, planning, the planning portion obviously takes a lot of priority, but I think the community development component to the planner's response, to his responsibilities would incorporate something like this. So as long as that can be coordinated with the planning board, is there time, is there time to do that? That's a question for the, that's a question for the planning board, but to some degree, it's going to have to be a team effort.
Can we hire somebody to help plan the recreation needs somehow through the planning or is there state funding or something to bring in professional help? Don't wait time for volunteers and a committee to be set up to get the big picture?
Open space grants.
Maybe the MRC might have a little bit of money at some point to do, to help out with that.
Open space grants?
Yeah.
That's right. Maybe open space technical assistance grant funding could help with that.
Wouldn't that be the planners to apply for all those grants?
That might be helpful.
If he's got time.
If he's got time.
All right.
Okay.
I think what we ought to do is hire Margaret back.
I was actually thinking of doing research this next weekend. I was like, wait a minute.
I'm ready to move on. The other option here, you know, would be voting against it. If you feel strongly, you could make that motion as well, that you just, you've heard what ag comm in particular tonight and, you know, the other letters had to say and we're closing the door to this and moving in other directions.
I, I personally would like to see it tabled for tonight.
Table for tonight, okay.
Is my...
Till what?
Well, we're, we need to, I don't know that I'll put this on the next meeting. I think maybe we'll, we'll wait until September, but you can, I mean, whatever, whatever. I think it also depends too on how far we get, how quickly, right? If a forester is out in 48 hours and we hear something very definitive, then that will help make that decision. If something comes out of the 2003 minutes from a town meeting that Anita can review, let us know if it needs legal review. And we get something very definitive, that's going to help make our, our timeline decisions, I think. Okay.
And the arrival of the planner?
Yeah.
I think what they consider too is, you know, we talked about 19. So the farmer pays April of 19, he gets to farm it through the end of 19. So are you willing to break that lease too and can you? Can you guys show us the lease first?
Do you know if it's ag, calendar 19, growing season 19?
You pay, yeah, growing season of 19, so...
Meaning we haven't hit it yet? Wouldn't have, that, you're saying that farmer would need to pay that money in April of the coming 2019?
Of 19.
So it's not fiscal year because we're already in 19.
Correct. So he gets to farm it for the season of 19.
The season of calendar 19. And he pays that in calendar 19.
Yes.
See, that's another thing, like we don't, we should check that. We can check that.
Well...
Let's check that.
Sure, let's check the lease.
Yeah. Let's check the non-existed. Okay. No action. Yes?
No action.
No action. Moving on. Board of Selectmen, goals and objectives. There is a document in front of you that Abby made up for us. Obviously, some of these things are low-hanging fruit. A couple of these things we actually took care of. We've already gotten our status on a couple of things on the bylaw subcommittee. We obviously have questions on some of the priority targets. So for example, if we really did want to do a general bylaw review committee, bylaw for the fall, that's really on us. And so that's something we need to think about. I think the one, actually the two things that I'd like us to focus on tonight, and I know Dick, you, I know you want to see this document too and, and ideally we would have some public input on it and some crowdsourcing. I think we have two things in particular that are big and require, you know, to Randy's point about some, some planning. The first is the regional emergency centers space expansion, which we're going to be hearing from Mike, we think, next meeting, yes?
Yes.
Yes. Okay. So in terms of that and the action plan, immediately after that meeting, we need to start talking about what a schedule is in order to enact that. If he really is taking over the Board of Selectmen's building, planning board?
Building.
If that's what it's going to take and then there's a timeline and Dick's already shaking his head, it's, it's the beginning of some very big discussions for all of us, right? Because...
I believe it.
Yeah. The second thing, and somebody in the room brought this up that I do want to focus on is the whole water sewer moratorium and a commission and a study committee along with all the issues we talked about relative to water and sewer and so timely because we've seen so many communities having water issues in the past couple of weeks, really just something else. So I know we've reached out to Quabin, right? I saw that message go out.
MWRA.
And, okay, MWRA regarding Quabin, we need to look at that in terms of the other water sources and most specifically to what Skip mentioned, it was the establishment of a water sewer district. And what I'm wondering, Margaret, maybe you can answer this question, is who's a good resource to bring in and to talk to us about the construction of a water sewer district, a community that already has one? And what the parameters were? What were they questioning when they said, "Well, here's where we're stopping and why"?
I know of several communities that have one. The question is, can anybody speak to any recent action? Let me put out an email across the state and see if anyone has done anything recently with the establishment of water sewer commissions. Thank you.
So you talk about water. Has anybody, anybody done anything with the wells up there at Rutland Heights? That big well they got up there, that water supply they got up at Rutland Heights?
Yeah, I, I put out a request, left a message. I have not heard back for somebody to come in and take a look at it, tell me how deep it is and if there's anything in there to be flushed and how many gallons a minute it's, you know, its capacity. But I have not heard back at all.
Does RDIC...
RDIC...
Knows you did that?
Yes, oh, yeah. It was all...
Okay.
Yes.
And I guess the other final thing that obviously came out of the hours of discussion tonight was, and we can go back to water sewer in a second if you need to, but it's the, the long-term goals that go along with the creation of a property review committee, where we talk about the possibility of right to purchase on properties, putting conservation or APR restriction on them, the review of all properties for forestry, which we're going to take the first steps, replication of farmland and the greater importance of APR in the town. And then going along with that on the smaller scale, review of the lease and any, and any legal documents that we're going to be doing relative to whether or not the Glenwood property is even up for more discussion. There is a lot more on here. Some of it is formation of committees all the way down to the 300th anniversary, which is in 2022. And we're going to keep talking about this as we structure these a little bit more. I think the biggest thing, or maybe I've already said this, maybe it's not the biggest thing, but I think one of the things, and Skip alluded to it, is a timeline in particular on water sewer. That moratorium is going to come fast and we need to be ready for it. And so are there, is there a strong feeling by the board of, say, taking, you know, a 60-day period and that would be our focus in the majority of our meetings where we're making, you know, really progressive steps towards finalizing what we need to do for this? Deciding on a commission structure, deciding on the district, we need to be figuring that out in the midst of hiring a new DBW superintendent because that's a big part of that role, so...
I, statute's going to govern the establishment of the water sewer district commissioners. So I can actually do a little bit of research and put together a framework...
Thank you.
...for that. I'm going to touch base with legal again on the, on the actual actions necessary to establish water sewer districts with or without a commission or water sewer district boundaries with or without a commission.
Mm-hmm.
And so MWRA is in process and then I, the other stuff, I guess we'll have to keep working on.
Can, can we keep a paper trail going about the whole well issue here in town, too? I mean, we just heard from Dick tonight that somebody might come and look at it and...
This is the Heights property.
Yeah.
Okay. So you know what? I should reach out to, or, or maybe Gary can. I'll work with Gary on this. We'll reach out to DEP because someone, someone at some point was issued a water withdrawal permit and that exists somewhere. And I'm thinking it's got to be with a, it's got to be with DEP. So we'll take a look at that, too.
This came out of Abby's notes. Did anybody have anything glaring that was missing? It's still not in a sort of, you know, structure that we sit there and say, "Okay, next month we know we're doing this necessarily." And, you know, some of these things we're hoping to tick off.
We talked about a lot of this stuff tonight.
We did. We just now need to take some actions, yeah.
The marijuana bylaw, the...
Yep. Yep.
They're coming higher inside.
I'll also follow up with Ron Baron on the managed growth bylaw, a managed growth steering committee, because I don't think there's been a kickoff meeting just yet. Is that right?
Thursday.
Thursday? Good. Okay. So it's, it's set in stone? Good.
I'll be there.
Okay. So that's the start of that one.
Uh... So can we get, let's put that on our next agenda so we don't forget to talk about it.
An update on that?
An update, yeah.
Where's that held, Dick?
On the managed growth steering, or two week update.
I, I don't know. It's at home.
What time on Thursday?
6:30 I got.
I think it was 6:30.
6:30, but I don't know where. I think we're all going to different locations.
6:30? Okay.
Might be a little tough for me.
Well, I might be able to be there, so.
I'd like to go, but depends, depends on some things. Lot of locations, so we know where to go?
Yeah. Can you, can you...
Anywhere? Camper?
And it should be posted as a committee meeting. We'll have to post tomorrow.
So where's putting the new parking lot?
Funny. Is there anything else to come before the board? No?
Oh, to the chair.
Thank you.
Take it.
All in favor?
Two do's.
9:25.